Committee to order, it is Wednesday, February 1st, and we are at the Lunenburg Town Hall. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. This meeting is also on the Public Access Facebook page and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel within 24 hours after the meeting. If you are joining the Zoom meeting, the meeting ID is 766-316-7607. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. I would like everyone to stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next portion is the public comments section of our meeting. The school committee welcomes comments from the public, comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome at either public comments section. Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comments section has a maximum of 10 minutes. Comments about individual students are prohibited by state and federal law. So I would be happy to take comments from the public. I, either one, make a decision, either way. And you need to state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Darrell Plant. I live at 490 Lancaster Ave. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to address some unfinished business. First, regarding the busing policy. Every parent pays taxes. Every parent should have the choice of a bus for their child, period. There shouldn't be any, any, I don't think there should be any discussion beyond that, quite frankly. Second, the mandatory SEL program. Just before Christmas break, the superintendent put together an SEL presentation with guests. I learned a few things. There were 25 kids that are in desperate need of social services, and they should get it. 25 kids out of an estimated 1,500 students, or .016%. The presentation provided no other information as to whether there is a proven benefit of making every student participate in the program. Mr. Scullenbrine keeps mentioning there are thousands of peer-reviewed studies. This is garbage. This committee nor the administration have not provided any evidence or study showing that a similar community with similar demographics benefited, i.e. improved grades, from a mandatory SEL program. Mr. Beardmore, you last said, and I know he's not here, that we simply had a difference of opinion, and you support the program. This is much more than a simple debate, sir. By law, you have my child in an institution, in a class, teaching him things that are in my purview, my responsibility, not yours. Moving on. Now an equity audit has been completed, and I have some questions. Will this entire report be made available with recommendations to all, and special public hearing be scheduled before being implemented? Two, last fall, Mrs. Burnham had a survey done to determine the need for the free lunch program. Was the personal and financial information obtained shared with the auditors? Three, were the auditors queried before entering facilities? Four, how much has the audit cost the town to date, and what's left on the contract? Mr. Lightman, our children share a common interest in sports, swimming, basketball, football. We spend a lot of time with many parents. Many know nothing about SEL or an equity audit. However, what they all say is that this school is failing our children. I never met a parent who said how excited they were with the SEL program and an equity audit. When I informed them of the two, they just shake their heads in disgust. Do you have the same experiences? Finishing up, some have told me I need to offer a way forward. So here we go. Start, number one. Start looking for a new superintendent of schools. These services, these searches can take one to two years. Get started now. Two, make SEL optional and provide alternatives. For example, remedial math, reading, writing, or even a gym class. Three, take this audit and shred it. These social engineering projects have nothing to do with achievement or educational excellence. Four, take the boot off our teachers' necks. Decentralized planning from the top is not working. Let the teachers teach. Five, this institution is in crisis. We need a Manhattan-like project with new leadership. Bring all the stakeholders together. Teachers, parents, the administration, even community leaders. Let everyone know just how bad things are. We are moving kids forward who are not grade-level proficient. Over half our student in grades three through five are one to two grades below proficiency. We need to act with a sense of urgency that the situation requires. Develop partnerships between the stakeholders. Drop the social experiments. Identify the children in need of emotional support and focus on the basics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plant. We will take a look at your comments, and at our next meeting, I will have a comment back to address these issues. Okay, thank you.
As always.
All right, that would be fine. Thank you.
Okay.
And our other.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Rabbi Eve Eichenholz, 225 Arlington Street in Leominster. I come here tonight to first thank the Lunenburg School Committee and School District for always welcoming me with open arms towards participation. I'm the rabbi in Leominster, and it's always been my great privilege to be able to participate in the Baccalaureate at the end of the high school year, and to know that we engage in dialogue and open conversations, and to take advantage of this public forum. I also want to thank Superintendent Burnham and Chairperson Archimbo.
Archimbo, yeah.
Archimbo for their speedy email response. Tonight, the topic that brings me here is the upcoming calendar conversation. While we know that in many of our districts in central Massachusetts Jewish holidays are days that are school days because we don't have population density that requires any other change or consideration, it's still important to know that I, while I speak for the Jewish community and with the Jewish calendar, this is true of many religious and cultural groups, that even on a day when they're school, there are still ways to support students in their religious and cultural observances, whether they're guided homework holidays or times that we consider all-school events, picture days, testing, professional development for our staff and faculty, that when it comes to recognizing a student's full identity, including their religious and cultural observances, it makes it easier to belong in their schools. And one of the things that I, as a rabbi, hear all the time are our students feel like they're on their own advocating for themselves. And while we might consider that character building for high schoolers, though I don't think it's fair to ask them to do that, it's certainly not appropriate for elementary school or middle school students who just go to school and feel ostracized or others feel, othered feel like because of the burdens of homework and class participation, they can't make the choice to stay home and be at synagogue observing their holidays and don't know how, don't have the language, don't feel that there's a safe space within their schools or with their teachers. Even those who want to or willing to bring it up don't feel that there's a place for them to do that. And so I'm here tonight mostly to listen and observe because I don't have critique at this point, right? I think we've always been good partners. But here to advocate for the communities who aren't here or aren't represented by individual leaders. Allow us to all keep this at our minds when we look at the calendar, not only for what, how do we get to 180, but also how do we support students throughout the year? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And is there any public comment from the committee this evening? Okay. Then next on our agenda is the Chair's report, I think. Yep. Carol.
Carol. Did we just double-check there's no one on the computer?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we didn't check. Is there, there were no comments from, thank you.
I'll just hold and double-check.
Okay. We have been reaching out to our state legislators regarding a meeting to discuss legislative priorities for this year's session. Mr. Jeffries has arranged a meeting with Senator Cronin and Representatives Kuschmerich and Skarsdale for March 7th. They have offered to make this a joint meeting. The meeting date that we had suggested, February 15th, we were unable to get the legislators for that date. So we have accepted this offer and appreciate working with the Select Board. So we will develop our questions for the legislators and concerns at our February 15th meeting. And then on March 7th, we will attend, any of us that can, will attend that meeting at that time. On Friday, I will be attending via Zoom an MAS C Learning Lunch discussing the implications of the anticipated late governor's budget on local school budgets. That's anticipated around March 1st, which is later than general. So I don't know what words of wisdom MAS C is going to have to provide to us regarding how to handle that fiscally, but if they do, I will hear what they are. And I will report back on that also at the February 15th meeting. The reason why it's late, I see a quizzical look. The reason why it's late is with the new governor. Usually it's, we get it in January, but because the governor is new, the state law, whatever they call it, allows her to have it done sometime during the month of March. We are also monitoring the local financial emergency regarding tax abatements in Lunenburg closely. There is no information on that. I don't anticipate information on that for quite a while, but we are keeping an eye on it. So that would be the Chair's report this evening. Now we go into our budget Q and A. So what we generally do is the budget has been presented, and there have been, are there any updates we need to know about?
I'll invite Mr. Cassidy.
Oh, Mr. Cassidy.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Cassidy, Business Manager. You, the Chairperson did report out that it seems like the state budget is coming in closer to March 1st instead of the information that we got mid-March. So hopefully, the town will know their allocation for local aid. Since the last meeting, the superintendent and I did meet with, we did school presentations via Zoom on snow days, right? So we had a relatively good turnout and good participation in each of those sessions. So that is staying in line with our budget timeline. So those are the really the only updates. We haven't received any information on our health insurance.
Okay.
Madam Superintendent, is there something?
Committee member Beardmore did ask, he indicated that he was anxious to hear what staff members had to say about the budget. We did encourage them to share any thoughts or ideas in addition to questions with us relative to budget. And they all seemed to be satisfied with the presentation that we provided and no additional thoughts about what we had proposed or other ideas to be incorporated in the budget. So I wanted to be sure that I conveyed that back to the committee.
In the first session, excuse me. In the first session, there was concern about the tax assessment and how it would impact next year's budget. We kind of mentioned that's unknown in the following session, so that didn't come up, but I think that was on everyone's mind.
Sure.
And that's really uncertain at this point, so.
Okay. Are there any questions from the committee regarding the budget? Mr. Lightman?
Yes, thank you. We heard in public comment about budgets for the equity audit. Do you have those numbers available that you could share with the public?
I don't off the top of my head. If you could, I could report back out to the committee. And I can report that publicly or at the next school committee meeting.
If you give me that number, I will include it in my comment at the next.
Very good.
At the next meeting.
Thank you.
Are there any additional comments from anybody listening about the budget?
I'm not seeing any.
No? I'm not seeing any. Okay, I just had one comment I wanted to make, or question, I guess. And my question is, how does this budget support our need to increase achievement? And I did tell the superintendent that I would be asking that question.
So I think one of the priorities that we have looked to maintain for my tenure here is a consistent reasonable class size. One of the additions in this particular year's proposed budget is a position at the high school that would allow us to reduce class sizes in the English classes in particular at the high school. So that's one of the things that we do. Part of the budget, not in full because we do have an athletic revolving account, but part of the budget also supports our athletic program. Again, extracurriculars, well-rounded experiences for all of our students. We do, in the local budget, have funded three of the five social worker slash adjustment counselor positions. The other two are funded through our ESAR grants. Right now, our reading intervention teachers at the Turkey Hill and Primary School, as well as tutors, are funded either through our Title I grant or the ESAR grants. Obviously, when ESAR funds are no longer an option, we'll have to make some decisions around incorporating some key positions into the budget, again, based on data and prioritized need. Largely, our budget for other areas, after-school tutoring, grant-funded through an after-school program grant. We, in recent years, have pursued several grants to fund curriculum purchases, which come with additional PD for teachers. But we do include professional development funds in our local budget, again, to provide that professional development for our staff relative to achievement, equity, MTSS intervention, SEL, and so on. I don't, I don't think that we've put anything into the local budget in the last few years, and particularly in the proposed budget tonight. Staff positions specifically targeting increased achievement above and beyond what we had as baseline in our budgets for the last several years. Over the last few years, we have looked to expand. Obviously, we've been able to maintain our staffing levels for special education, including paraprofessionals, maintaining staffing levels there to support students. Trying to think if there was.
I think you.
I think that that was.
Yeah, we hit that conversation.
Pretty well-rounded. Again, for years, we've looked to provide after-school activities for students, but those have always largely been funded through revolving accounts or gift accounts to the school. So within, within the local budget itself, that's what I would speak to. But I think that there's a bigger, wider lens on how we're trying to optimize all of the funding sources that are available to us right now to meet the broadest need for a well-rounded experience for kiddos when they're in our schools. That's their academic, their social-emotional. And when I say social-emotional, I mean their social development as well as emotional-behavioral types of needs as well. So if you have any other thoughts or questions more specific?
When, when we talk about multi-tiered system of instruction, and we talk about the new curriculums that have been adopted, we are not only talking about supporting those learners that are more challenged, but also those.
Those who excel.
That excel. And I just want to make sure that that point is.
So we have moved in recent years to implementation of a benchmark for reading and math up through eighth grade. And our teachers take a look at the data that's yielded through those benchmark assessments. And we group our students for not only intervention to close gaps, but those students who are excelling are also grouped. And then they are provided an opportunity for challenge in their learning. I would say that while right now, our I-ready, we're fortunate enough to be funding through a different grant-funded resource, we would be looking to maintain the I-ready assessment because it does give us really important and valuable data. So at some point down the road, the costs for that, we would be looking to absorb into the budget to maintain our teacher's capacity to identify the needs of the students in their classroom, for principals to identify needs more broadly, for the district to identify needs more broadly, to better meet the academic needs of the students. Right now, as I said, we're able to fund that with a grant. Right now, we're able to fund ongoing purchase of, let's say, our math curriculum materials, those consumable materials, the workbooks, that kind of thing, through the, through the multi-year grant. But eventually, all of that, over time, is going to have to be brought back into the local budget. But yeah, I mean, the way that we have shifted over the last few years to a more clearly defined MTSS model based in data, various data, not just an I-ready test score. I think it just, it talks about the shift to working in a more targeted way to ensure that kiddos are getting what they need to be able to successfully access curriculum and get to performing on a grade level in any of those curricular areas. And later this evening, there's a presentation on the assessment. But more broadly, that presentation will also reflect the progress, a progress update on our student learning goal for our leadership team. So we will hear more about all of that later this evening as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scullenbrine?
Can I ask Dr. Burnham a question?
Of course.
How has the budget been impacted by the one thing that we all are always worried about, which is the after-effects of COVID? And then the thing that Mr. Beardmore is worried about, which is possible economic restrictions? Like what sort of planning have you guys done to, you know, figure out what's going to happen when the ESAR grants go away? And then what sort of planning have you guys done in anticipation of any possible economic contraction?
So I would say that, and Mr. Cassidy, you can jump in. The impact of COVID is still here. For, for most folks, it's not something that's on everybody's radar anymore. We're not testing kids who have been exposed to keep them in school. We're not reporting data to the state on the number of cases, but.
Dr. Burnham, I'm sorry, I made a, I made a mistake. I'm not talking about like budgeting for nurses and stuff, but like the, like my son was in kindergarten near COVID happened, and it has impacted him in a number of ways.
Right.
The, the, some of the things that are in the budget are grants that were passed in light of COVID and provide services for those kids that are sort of trying to catch up. Can you sort of detail what the plan is to replace this grant? Sorry, my fault.
So my, where I was headed with that is that we are still continuing to struggle with the impact of COVID. It's still ongoing, right? It still impacts staff attendance. It still impacts student attendance. When teachers and/or students are out for a five-day period, it, it does impact the momentum of instruction and learning for the kiddos. So that's one point. We're not past COVID. Yes, the ESAR grants targeted COVID. Those will go away. However, the state has been pushing lots of different initiatives and has continued to put out different kinds of grants. Most of them tend to focus on evidence-based curriculum to support high-quality curriculum, high-quality instruction in order to close those, those gaps. Allowable as part of, you know, some of these other grants, not only the curriculum, but other, other things like our I-ready assessment tool or the I-ready MyPath Individualized Learning Platform. So there, there are additional grant sources that continue to come that do target the impact of COVID, but they are not expressly advertised as, you know, a COVID-related grant. Which is why Mr. Cassidy and I have continued to say that we were going to remain hopeful that we will see more of those types of grant offerings coming relative to the social-emotional need relative to that long-term impact from COVID. The curriculum teams here tonight, we can do a separate presentation. Perhaps Mrs. Scott can briefly mention that there are additional grants that we are looking to apply for right now with deadlines, you know, in the next couple of weeks. So we're taking a look at and pursuing any funding source that allows us to continue to fund the work that we've embarked on and free up local budget funding to address some of the other areas that we know that we need to continue to address. So I'm not sure if that answers.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
So this is more of an internal strategy. Every discussion that the admin team has, we're thinking of the move that we make and how, what it could potentially look like if ESAR funds go away and there's no support for that. So that is always a consideration as we, as we talk. And it's becoming more regular now as we get closer to the end of COVID. A year ago, it, it was certainly a consideration.
A year ago, it was certainly a consideration, but it's becoming more real. And as Dr. Burnham said, we'll use data to help us make that decision. And some of those decisions may be offset by some federal state grants. So.
Additionally, you know, we're always attentive to possibility of retirements and what we may or may not be able to do in terms of restructuring or reallocating FTEs or redesigning programs based on a retirement. You know, those are just sort of in the background. That's how our mind is always working, whether COVID monies are expiring or not, any ongoing budgetary impact planning. We're always thinking about those things as well. But definitely, the administration has gotten the message consistently since COVID shutdown in March of 2020 that we would be needing data because we will have difficult decisions to make. And we're going to need to be able to justify and support the decisions that we make relative to what we look to transition and fund through the local budget versus what we may cut and be prepared to explain why this is a higher priority than another need. Because there are still going to be needs, and we will have to make decisions about current staffing levels that are targeting those needs that we will not be able to maintain. So we'll be making Plan B minus the staffing, right? It's always about, well, how can we lessen the impact of that? What else can we do? What models might we need to shift? Again, it's just become a constant state of mind, I think, for us.
Does that help?
That was great.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there are no other questions concerning budget, I will just mention to the public in general that we will have on the first meeting in March, another question-and-answer period on budget. So if you do have particular questions, our budget, the proposed budget is on the website, and we would be happy to take any questions from anybody at that time. Okay, next, review and approve minutes, regular meeting session, January 18th. Did anybody have a question about those minutes? Mr. Leighton.
In those minutes, they mentioned the November 16th minutes that we tabled those. I was wondering if you'd entertain a motion to revise the agenda to include the November 16th minutes as well?
Well, we could do that. Off the top of my head, I don't remember the November 16th minutes.
They were in the last folder of our last meeting.
And they were tabled because? I wasn't there.
Attendees were actually at the November 16th meeting to get them approved.
Okay. All right.
I believe you'd have to make a motion to take a vote, and then you can take.
Then we can take a vote.
So everybody has to agree that you're going to.
Yes.
Take that up.
I get that idea. All right. Well, I'm not opposed. You can make a motion to, we can do this.
I'll make a motion to vote for the November 16th meeting minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think I wasn't here.
I wasn't there.
You think that was the problem?
No, I wasn't.
Oh, okay.
I think you were, I wasn't.
Okay. Then I vote aye.
Okay. Then.
It would be in the January folder.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
January 18th folder.
Yeah.
It just says that Laura wasn't here.
I just got to look quickly. We were busy that night. There's a lot up here. Okay. All right. So then we need a motion to approve both sets of minutes then.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 16th minutes as well as the January 18th minutes.
You know what? We have to take them separately.
I can.
Yeah, we'll have to do them separately.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 16th minutes.
And a second?
A second.
All right. All those in favor of approving the November 16th minutes?
Aye.
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 And then the next one.
Make a motion to approve the January 18th minutes.
I'll second that.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining because I know I was gone for that one.
I wasn't at that meeting either.
Oh.
You have to wait for Peter to do that.
I guess we'll have to table that one, too.
We'll have to table that one because I wasn't.
You're doing really well here.
Tony wasn't there, so, sorry, got to wait on that one. We got one.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. We'll do that at the next meeting.
That's great.
It's always something. All right, line item transfers. Mr. Cassidy.
No, that makes sense. I just saw it now, absent and absent.
Good evening, Mike Cassidy, business manager. This evening, there's a transfer from Turkey Hill Elementary School. They'd like to transfer a total of $2,122 from three accounts. That's a math supply account, guidance supplies, and science supplies. They've done purchasing out of those line items, and they'd like to transfer those balances to support the purchase of a new touch-view interactive screen for their visual art instruction. The touch-view interaction screens are in all the classrooms. They want to expand to their specials or allied arts. Allied arts.
Any questions for Mr. Cassidy about that transfer? And do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfer presented by Mr. Cassidy.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. And now the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. An update on our equity audit. I did receive the final equity audit report last evening via email. So we will add this to our February 15th meeting agenda for discussion. I do have a print copy for each of you to take and begin your perusal this evening. This document in its entirety will be also posted on our website. Additionally, we'll post it again with the documents for the February 15th meeting as well. So it will be available in multiple locations.
Get that back to Kate.
Relative to the Family School Partnership Initiative program through DESI, we did have an independent team meeting on Monday this week, and we are working to develop priority areas for focus for our work as a district moving forward. Quick update on the position that was approved, the Facebook administrator position. We actually had seven internal applicants for that stipended position, so, which is really quite unusual. But we will initiate some interviews of some of the staff that have applied next week. Yes, Mr. Schoen-Burnham.
I love being called on. Perhaps this is directed to the chair. Perhaps we have a little more time on the 15th if there's extra public comment for the equity audit. I mean, we had somebody commenting here today already.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can make sure of that. Yep. Thank you.
Our pre-K and kindergarten registration opened today. All of the registration documents are posted on both the district website on the main page as well as on the primary school webpage. Just as an FYI, separate from pre-K and kindergarten registration, just some advance notice to our parent community, our Early Learning Center and extended day before and after school for next school year, registration will open April 3rd this year. A few February reminders. On the 13th, the primary school is hosting their math night. Looking forward to that. Our next school committee meeting will be on the 15th at 6:30. And if it's the wish of the committee, we could host our first hybrid Zoom meeting from the middle high school.
Awesome.
To test out the new setup.
Great.
Reminder for all families that the week of February 20th, schools are closed for school vacation week, and offices will also be closed Monday, the 20th, in observance of President's Day. And lastly, I just want to make mention of the anticipated cold weather for Friday. I just would like to remind parents that dressing students in layers during the very cold weather is recommended. Additionally, I want to provide an update that we did experience a challenge with one of the Turkey Hill boilers. It went into fault. There were some classrooms that were in the low to mid-60s. There were some that were also in the upper 50s. We addressed that issue first thing this morning prior to the opening of the school day. We've been monitoring the classroom temperatures throughout the day, and they do seem to be recovering nicely. There are many of our classrooms that are back up to 68, 69, 70 at this point. But we will continue to monitor that situation as we are in all of our buildings anticipating the cold snap. So I think that's all I have. Questions?
Yeah, it went into fault. What does that mean?
There are very.
I know, it's very quirky.
Yeah. So while it is an older building and an older system, there are some digital controls for the system, and something sort of tripped it into fault. So one of the boilers wasn't functioning optimally. So they did a reset of that first thing this morning, and there was good recovery. Mr. Cassidy will speak to this now, too.
It default, it can't maintain the level to heat the building. So that's why, it goes into default.
Okay.
So, and we're trying to maintain that.
Yep.
We're looking at that.
So they reset it, like they didn't find something was broken? It was just like?
And they also did do an inspection of each one of the units in each of the classrooms. They did find in one of the classrooms that one of the valves in the classroom had been shut. So they opened the valve. That resolved that problem. And there was one unit, the fan was not on. They did turn that fan on in that particular unit. But the larger problem really comes back to the fact that the boiler just was not functioning optimally to heat the building. We do have a call-in to the vendor that has that control system.
The pneumatic control system on the dampers and the heat in each room.
When we connected with Mr. Pusiteri this afternoon around 3:30, 4 o'clock, oh, actually, it was later than that because we got updated temperatures at 5:30 this evening. He was still waiting to hear back from that particular vendor. But we're monitoring. We'll be on it first thing in the morning to make sure that we don't have a repeat tomorrow morning.
How many classrooms were affected by it? Just wondering.
Well, essentially, all of the classrooms.
They were all, okay.
Were at a lower temperature than what would be typical.
Yeah, okay.
But again, once that reboot happened, it did maintain for the rest of the day, and the temperature in the room obviously had to overcome a low-temperature start. But by 5:30 this evening, the temperatures have recovered nicely. We just need to be sure that we don't have a repeat of this issue in the morning.
No.
So we will be there early enough in the morning that if that same situation occurs, we'll be able to reboot earlier to get the temperatures back up. The other thing is with the really cold air, the administrators in the building have made some modifications to your day-to-day practice. So in other words, usually, the buses arrive, students enter the building through the main door. But that main door, when the door is open, cold air can travel straight up that corridor and then filter in through the entire first floor. So they are, with the next couple of days with the really cold weather, the kiddos will be coming into the cafeteria. That will help mitigate some of that cold air traveling straight up the corridor and into the first-floor classroom corridor.
Okay. All right. Everybody set? Okay. Well, then, it is on to our student representative. Hello, Sean, how are you?
Hi, good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Tonight, Lunenburg High School is hosting a memorial basketball game for Ms. Nass with a theme surrounding her love for Disney. All money raised during the game will be donated to the Nass family, and access to Lunenburg Public Schools and Turkey Hill Middle School report cards are live as of Monday, January 30th. Looks like I'm keeping it short and sweet. That's all I got.
That's all you have.
That's all I got.
Okay. All right. Well, I hope they have good luck with the game for Ms. Nass.
Me, too. I'll report back.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the FY '23 quarterly budget update.
Good evening, Mike Cassidy, business manager. In front of the school committee tonight, as a report of progress, is the quarterly report for the FY '23 budget. The data is, includes data up to last Friday, January 27th. Once again, this report is on our website, but just want to share the report with the school committee. Things are on target within the budget. Some adjustments may have to be made, but just simple transfers, internal transfers that won't have to go in front of the school committee. In this report, a little bit different than what has been presented to the school committee previously, there is blue negative amounts, and those reflect, those line items will zero out or will not be a negative as soon as you sign the transfers that you already voted on at the last meeting. There are some yellows, and I want to bring those to your attention. Once again, that nursing purchase of service, that is, this is on page four. That is our SNAP service that will be wiped out by the next school committee meeting. That is going to be funded by the DPH grant. There's another negative balance under the technology account of $17,000. You're owed an explanation on this. This is a, we're working with Comcast. E-Rate, which is a federal grant program that supports technology and communications in schools. There's been a slight error. Comcast, or E-Rate was supposed to pay Comcast directly, and they've been charging our account. So we're looking to get a credit to reduce that negative balance. It was properly budgeted. It's just a little out of whack, and we're hoping to work with our consultant and E-Rate to reconcile that negative balance. And just some of the other blue negative balances which were presented at the last school committee meeting. Once again, we're on target. We are. We are going to be looking at our grounds facility pretty closely as far as we reconciled that negative natural gas balance.
I'm sorry.
To Mr. Leighton's inquiry at the last meeting, I think we're on target with that electricity account. We're right on target. And my recollection is that budget was, I think, the only facility and grounds budget, line item that was increased last year. So we were trying to capture that. So I think we're still on target for that. Just, God bless you. Just to be clear, and sometimes it's, we have to, want to take a step back. So the headings on here are the original budget that the school committee voted on. Any transfers that we've done during the school year in the revised budget. Expended is actually what has come out of the account. Incumbrances are what we've set aside with, for vendors and POs that we draw payments out of. So, but you look at that electricity account, says, well, we only have approximately $3,700. But actually, we have another 98 in POs to pay for the next six months of bills. So it's always, it's always good to hear that, especially for the public. But that's, that's what that budget is saying, so. I'll take any questions if the school committee has any.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Cassidy?
Just a comment. I appreciate your in-depth explanation of the electricity because I think for the people at home and people up here, it's much different budgeting electricity for your house than it is for the school, and the explanation helps a lot.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right.
All right.
We don't have $3,000, $3,700 off. We have more, that we've got about $100,000 to get us through the rest of the year.
Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, see why you're hanging around? The next thing is the ESER 2 and 3 report.
In front of the school committee tonight, my Cassidy business manager, in front of the school committee tonight, is an update on our ESER 2 and ESER 3 grants. We alluded to potential surpluses in our budget, I believe it was in November, last time we reported. We had indicated some potential items that we would like to transfer to. So we'll, I'll present those in a minute. So the first report is exactly what was budgeted, any amendments that has gone through the school committee and through DESI, and what we've spent so far. And that expenditure is for both years. So it's last school year and what we spent this year. So it's a cumulative amount. So that being said, there are some, even though we've only spent this, to get us through the end of the year, I'm projecting another, all these amounts, which total 522, 729. So there is a surplus of $66,106. Now, a lot of that is from, I don't want to say over budgeted, but we conservatively budgeted for employees that would be eligible for insurance, and they never really took that. There was some savings in non-instructional support salaries. We were able to transfer one of the IT salaries from last year to the local budget, which opened up some money. And there was some after-school money that we're not going to be spending entirely. And then, and those were activities, not instruction. And then there was after-school program, which was also budgeted under that account, which our curriculum office got a competitive grant. So that freed up the money in ESER. So, ESER 3. Once again, this, we've got another year of expenditures under this grant. So a little, a little bit more that, under our projections, but still a surplus, we're projecting a surplus at this point. And a lot of it is, once again, the grant was intended to support health insurance for our employees under the grant, so it wouldn't impact the local budget. That did not happen, so that created a surplus. That seems to be the big one. And then, non-instructional support salaries, we had some, we were able to transfer some of our tutor accounts to the local budget, which freed up some more money. So we have, tonight, we have a proposed amendment that we would like to submit to the Department of Education, of elementary and secondary education, as it relates to our ESER budgets. So first, ESER 2. We're looking to shift money from within the ESER 2 budget to support, the big transfer is our eye-ready materials for K-8. And that transfer will support our student assessment, personal student learning platforms, and professional development for teachers. And at this point, there's about a $3,700 balance, and I'd like to allocate that, and I'm recommending to allocate that to purchase of Chromebooks. Next is ESER 3, as we can see it. Two of the ESER 2 positions, the primary school guidance counselor and the math teacher, intervention teacher at Lunenburg High School, is expiring off the ESER 2 grant. To maintain those student services, we are recommending that those salaries be transferred to the third year of ESER. And there's funding to support that transfer for those employees. So they're low-salaried employees, and that's why we're able to do it. And as we increase our instructional staff, we have to increase, there is a portion of it that has to be paid to MTRS, which is the teacher retirement. So as we increase the salaries, we have to increase the MTRS. So I'd be happy to take any questions on this tonight. I'm going to recommend that you table this after, after any discussion. I'd like to bring this forward. I'd like to post this on our website for any public comment. Bring it back to the school committee. Share any comments that the public may have brought to our attention. Answer any more school committee questions and recommend a transfer. So, and that may be on the February 15th or March 1st agenda.
Okay.
Depending on what the agenda looks like. So I'd be happy to take any questions regarding this memo, the budget, and any amendments that are being proposed tonight. But just know that this is coming in front of the school committee again, and I'd be, you know, there'll be a Q and A at that point, too.
Mr. School and Briny.
This is a really dumb question. I looked up MTRS, and it's the Massachusetts Teacher Retirement System. Is that just what they call the pension?
Yeah.
Okay, because in New Hampshire, where I'm the lawyer, it's, all of the public employers are in one pension system. So they do it separately?
They do it separately. So in Massachusetts, there's a teacher retirement system. So if you're a certified teacher, you can retire under that. Boston, I don't want to go off track here, but Boston has their own retirement system. And then there is, you may or may not know, you know, there are regional retirement systems which municipal employees contribute to and retire through.
Okay.
So, there's not one single one in Massachusetts.
Is that something else for the acronym list?
I, I...
Get it out.
I am sorry. I should, I should have...
No, no, you did, you did fine, John.
I'm learning.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Cassidy? As always, very clear about where things came from and how things move to what's needed. And as I know that when we talked about perhaps MASC or the superintendent's group trying to push for more money, they were just trying to push to get expended. That's not a problem here. The money will be spent in plenty of time. So I appreciate that.
And I would, you know, there's another update on ESER in May. And, you know, if there's any additional money in ESER 2, we'll be making recommendations at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you for your consideration.
So now we're at the concession stand.
(laughing) Sorry.
Mr. Cassidy, will you share that slide presentation as well? Or do you want me to pull that up?
No, I can, let me, let me jump in.
We also have with us this evening Mrs. Lorenzen, who is our food service director. She has been, along with Mr. Cassidy and myself and Mr. Pusiteri, but largely, Mrs. Lorenzen has been the primary contact for the booster organizations. We've been working with them since last year relative to upgrades that would accomplish their goal of being able to serve hot food and beverage at the Snack Shack. So we wanted to, we've been doing some significant work over the last many months, and we wanted to be able to provide you an update. So Mrs. Lorenzen, can you hear me?
I can.
Hello.
Hi there.
All righty. So a quick overview of what we're going to cover here. Upgrades that have been completed to date, pending upgrades, as well as policy and standard operating procedure manual that Mrs. Lorenzen has developed both. An update on anticipated opening for use and information relative to a permission to post that's also on this agenda this evening, a position to help oversee operations at the concession stand. We'll also give you next steps. So at this point, upgrades that have been completed to be compliant with the code for the Board of Health relative to serving the hot and cold foods include installation of a three-bay sink, a handwashing sink, a mop sink, a grease trap, and a warming tray. And we have also passed a plumbing inspection based on installation of all of this new equipment. Total cost, just under $8,000 for all of that work. Pending upgrades, two refrigerators, some racks, utility tables, because we lost counter space having to install all of those sinks, two microwaves, a hot dog roller, backsplash and drywall repair, based on having to open the walls to do with plumbing. We're also looking to purchase floor mats, stools, and some added barrels, as well as apply a sealant paint to the floor. And the pending inspection is with the Board of Health. They will have to sign off on all of these upgrades. And at this point, the cost for all of these pending upgrades is just under $5,000. You have before you this evening, when we get to first read policies, a policy relative to the Snack Shack operation. This policy was developed by our food service director. It has been reviewed by our policy subcommittee, and again, it's on the agenda for the entire committee to review later this evening. Additionally, the food service director has written a standard operating procedure manual. This does reflect the Board of Health food regulations. And it also gets into some roles and responsibilities for operation. We're anticipating that we should be able to have the Snack Shack available for use for this level of operation. We're targeting for April 1st. This is going to require some oversight to be sure that groups that are using the facility are doing so in accordance with policy and the manual that's been developed. We're hoping that Gil approves permission to post for us this evening at this meeting. If you do, we will post and advertise that position tomorrow. We're hoping to be able to appoint for this position approximately a month from now. We are preparing for the Board of Health inspection. We're hoping that that will be no later than March 31st, although we're working with the Board of Health right now, and we have some possible dates mid-March. And we would then, after that approval with that inspection, be able to distribute keys, set up equipment, prepare the lockers for each of the different user groups, as well as meet with each of them to go over the operation. So, next steps. We will, I did mention at the last meeting that we have an offer of a donation to support the remaining upgrades. So we will be bringing that forward to you hopefully in the, at the next school committee meeting. We will begin work on purchase and installation of the remaining equipment over the next three to four weeks. Again, we're hopeful that there's a successful Board of Health inspection by the end of March. Based on temperature, however, we won't be able to successfully seal the floor until the temperature, the outside temperature warms sufficiently. We're anticipating that we will do that in the summertime, assuming that that is satisfactory to the Board of Health. And we're also looking to transition key access to the entire building away from physical keys to a card reader, a swipe key access like we have for our staff at our, at our school buildings. It allows us much greater control and management of who has access to the facility and when. And when keys are lost, we shut them off. So we are looking at that beyond this immediate, next handful of months. Okay, so again, timeline, we are here early February... Okay, so again, timeline, we are here early February. We're looking for policy approval over the next several meetings. Again, your review and approval of the operating procedures, manual, permission to post. And in the next few weeks, we hope to be bringing back that donation to cover cost of the pending upgrades. Again, we're going to move on, purchase and installation of that remaining equipment, post and hire a concession stand supervisor, get through that Board of Health inspection. And again, targeting for that April 1st, open for this upgraded level of use by our booster groups and honestly, any of our youth organizations that use our facility. Questions?
Well, before I do any questions, I want to thank Mrs. Lorenzen for her above and beyond work on this. This is an incredible task and we very much appreciate and know that this was a monumental thing to put together. It's been brewing for quite a while, so we thank you very much. Is there anyone with any questions? Mr. Leighton?
I just had some comments. I again want to thank you for, I think this is going to improve the experiences for all residents of Lunenburg, not just the athletes and the families, too. I do want to say, I think oversight is huge, especially early on. I think also it's a privilege to use it. So again, having that oversight and making those disciplinary decisions if needed. Also, if policy needs to be changed, I think don't hesitate to reach out to policy and make recommendations for changes in the future to try to improve the process, because it's been a while since we've experienced the snack shack like we're hoping. So I also want to thank you, too, for shooting for that April 1st deadline. I think that's great for the, the spring sports, too, for the boosters. So thank you.
Anyone else? Nope. I guess not. So I thank you very much. And we'll be back at the policy section of our program here. Thank you. Next, the educational acronym list update. And before we start on this, for people that have no clue what we're talking about, many of our members that are not public school teachers or public school teacher retirees found it difficult with the amount of acronyms that get thrown around. And I'm sure that the public, well, that would be, and Peter as well. And I'm sure that the public is also confused sometimes when we throw around acronyms. And so as part of our goals for this year, the idea was to come up with a list of acronyms. And these acronyms are available on the website.
With the documents for this evening.
With the documents for this evening. So that if you hear us chit-chatting about something and you have no clue what we're talking about, chances are the acronym is on this list. Mr. Schoolenbrini, I thank you greatly. He has kept a very close diary during his time on the committee of all the things we say that people don't understand, that we don't realize that people don't understand. So we thank him very much for that. And thank you very much for putting it all together. So any discussion on this?
Thank you so much. I think that, I just want to say this. The reason why the acronyms are really important is I think that people do not understand the level of complexity and sophistication in the modern educational apparatus. And so in order to get in and see the details, like to lift up the proverbial hood, having this acronyms list and just like for me, researching what it was gave me better insight into how sophisticated it is to be a teacher. It's not, you know, it's not like chalkboards and that's it. I mean, it's, it's so data-driven and there's so much information. And it's, you know, a very complex system because they're doing like the most important thing you can do. So I'm really grateful for this and kind of glad that I can have one place to go, it's like 50 different places.
I also would suggest that when we come up with something and we're discussing, the first time we say it, we probably should translate it before we go in a meeting, before we go, like if we decide to talk about DOE, we should say Department of Education, DOE, and then bring it back so that in the general discussion, everybody is aware of what we're talking about. But I think this is going to be very useful.
Yeah, I think in general, like I think in our meetings, if we tend to use the acronyms, I think it's, it would be good for us all to share what those acronyms mean as we catch it in our, in our meetings.
Brian is also just glad I don't have to tap him on the shoulder.
So thank you very much, everybody, for putting that together.
So I'll post this, but I also would just like your permission that as we come across acronyms that are not on the list, that I can just go ahead and update it.
Yes, please do.
Absolutely, please. Yes. That would be awesome. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent Strategy and Goals Progress Update.
So you have copies of all of the action plans that are part of the strategy. They do now, they, they've been updated to include progress notes. They do include some links to other information. These documents are also posted on the website. So I won't sort of get into the whole thing right now. We plan to bring another progress update for you in April. And then again, at the end of June, at the end of the year. As you know, we're, we've moved to a two-year evaluation cycle. So obviously, you'll need an update prior to an evaluation in May. But since this is an ongoing thing, I wanted to be able to come back and give you an update again in June. Typically, in the fall, I bring to you a revised, updated strategy with new action plans as needed or updated actions within an existing action plan. And I present that to you typically in the fall and you sign off on that as well. But at that time, I'm also usually bringing forward goals for approval for the next year's evaluation. So since largely those goals are in place, minus the climate culture goal that is year two right, right now. So there'll be a new goal to replace that. But in the fall, I will give you another update on progress on all of these goals. So that it's, you know, periodic, every handful of months, I can bring back updates for you. And again, all of these, you know, for, for me and my team, they're sort of living documents. So we're checking in and updating on those routinely. Again, rather than get into a whole update now, I'll give you a chance to review. Again, these are posted for the public. Public is invited always to provide any thoughts relative to any progress, questions, concerns. Happy to respond to those as well. Additionally, you have progress notes on the goals. This evening, you'll get an update really focused around that student learning goal with the assessment report and the additional slides and information that's being presented to you this evening. You'll be able to see it mirrors back to the sections in that student learning goal. Obviously, there'll be another assessment report come June and therefore, an update on progress on that goal as well at that time. I mean, I'm happy to answer questions relative to any of the documents that I've shared with you. But I think potentially, there can be a richer discussion and questions after we see the assessment presentation from the curriculum team.
Anybody have any comments they would like to make at this time? I'm going to throw up my very quick comments. I was happy to see that there is a look at updating the core values.
Yes.
Because those have been somewhat stagnant and it is good to, to take another look at those. I was very impressed, of course, this is going to tie into later, but with the notes from the PD days and the reading instruction and what was going on, because of course, that's my jam. So that's what I looked at. And I was very impressed with the update in instructional methods that were being shown in those PD days. And also very glad to see the elementary school visitations, one of those sites I'm very familiar with and is a very good spot to go.
Our teachers were very happy to have had that experience. And we'll talk a little bit about that tonight.
Sure. Okay. So if there's nothing else, we'll keep going. The next, oh, we're going right here. Under new business discussion, the assessment report.
So I'll introduce Mrs. Scott, our Director of Teaching and Learning. And we also have with us this evening our Title I Coordinator, Deirdre McLean. And I'm looking to see, I don't see. Okay. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Scott to start off.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Annika Scott, Director of Teaching and Learning. Do you want to click through this slides? Dr. Brenner, what did you want me to share? Okay, it looks like you're going through. So the first thing we wanted to start with is the mid-year assessment report. We'll talk about some of the other assessments that we're looking at. But the first thing we're going to talk about is the I-Ready Winter Benchmark Assessment, which we gave in both reading and math. At the primary school is the first set of data. And just make my screen bigger so I can see. Okay. We, most of our district is participating in a student learning goal of getting 80% of our students on grade level by the end of next year. So we're really taking a look at how many students are in green, so to speak, on or above grade level. So you can see at the primary school, an average of the three grades is 67% right now on grade level. And we're also looking to take that red grouping, which is two or more grade levels below, and reduce that. So you can see that currently at the primary school is down to 1% in reading. You'll see that the, the bold line is the winter benchmark. And then the comparison to the fall is underneath. So you can see where the percentages were in the fall. And then we broke it down with you here by grade level. And we take a close look as a district admin at each grade level, where we were in the fall. I included a slide later that, that shows, okay, how many kids did we have mid or above grade level last winter at this time? So for example, how many first graders were on grade level this year? How many were on grade level last year at this time? And then how many of that cohort, so they were kindergartners last year, were on grade level and then are still on grade level this year? Because we're following the cohorts as well. We're going to show growth and again, reviewing. Typical growth is the average growth that students at each grade level are expected to have. And so from one grade level to the next, a typical growth would be 100%. You're, you're growing 100% from one grade level to the next. However, we are looking to grow some of our students more than 100% because if they're below grade level, we want to get them to grade level. So on I-Ready results, and I will go over this with families in more detail at our Zoom drop-in meetings that we'll have. They also include stretch growth, which is a path towards proficiency for students who are below grade level. This is our current growth. So overall, the primary school, we're at 83%. And then the breakdown of grade levels, kindergarten, 89, grade one, 83, and grade two, 79. So working towards that 100. For Turkey Hill, the school overall, right now, you can see, let's see, 62% on or above grade level. We have lowered the one or more, the two or more grade level below, so the red from the fall, which is good news. And then the breakdown of the grade levels is here as compared to the fall. Again, we look across teacher data for each grade level to see which classrooms, you know, might be struggling, how we might be able to provide support to not just classrooms, but individual students. And then the growth at Turkey Hill overall is already over 100%, which is great to see. And in particular, two of the grade levels are over 100%. Grade five at 121. So that was great news. We, we want to keep that going so we get more and more students on grade level. Then middle school, looking at 57% currently on grade level at the mid-year, where again, we're looking to lower that, those red, students in red and raise the students in green, which we are moving in that direction as compared to the fall. And then six, seven, eight breakdown by grade level and growth. At the middle school was actually highest of all, so at 120 on the whole for school and every grade level, over 100% growth from the fall. But the next slide shows what I told you we were taking a close look at. So kindergarten through eighth grade, what is the percent of students on or above grade level? And the percent of students who are on or above grade level last year at this time? And then I included the percent change. I do want to point out first grade, you'll see it's a plus 31% change from last year, their cohort at this time. I also want to point out that kindergarten, you know, they're, they've been coming in every year without COVID gaps, other than, you know, there definitely is a learning curve for, for kids who had interrupted pre-K, for example. But this first grade class had a full year of kindergarten last year, received those kindergarten foundational skills and don't have the COVID gaps that we're dealing with in every one of the other grade levels. So I was so happy to see that first grade growth in particular. So for math, we have the primary school breakdown here. And we're showing 53% of students on grade level. And if you recall, you know, our data from the past in math has been below that of reading. So we're really looking to bolster our math scores. But we have the red down to 2% on the primary school, which is great. Breakdown of K1 and 2 here with the math scores. I also want to point out that we are adopting, as you know, two brand-new curriculums. And oftentimes, you will see data come down during the first year of implementation for new curriculums because every teacher is a rookie for implementation. You know, you, you're not teaching the same lessons that you've been teaching for years. You're teaching brand-new lessons and, and acclimating, and so are the students. So it was nice to see that we are still showing the growth even though we're implementing those two new curriculums. And the growth slide is next for math at the primary school at 76%. So, you know, in a typical year, you would be looking for, to be at about 50% right now. So we're above that, which is great. But we're also looking to be above that because we want to move more and more students on to grade level or above. Math at Turkey Hill, so currently 42% on or above, 11% in the red. And so we're, we're also through our interventions taking a close look at those students in yellow. What do they need? How can we get them onto grade level with our targeted interventions? And then a breakdown of the grade level will be on the next slide. And growth at Turkey Hill, overall, 59%. But you can see that all the grade levels are above 50 and in particular, grade five, showing 100% growth in math, which they should be very proud of. Middle school, overall, 55% on or above grade level. And then a breakdown of the grade levels would be next. And looking for the growth here, we're at 8, 9% overall at the middle. And looking for the growth here, we're at 8 and 9% overall at the middle school. Sixth grade showing 100% growth already. And then seventh and eighth not far behind in the 70s. Then we did a math slide next that shows the comparison of this year, students on or above. Oh, you know what? These must be the other slides, Dr. Burnham. Is there a way for me to share my screen?
Yes, if you give me one second. You should be all set.
Okay. Can you see that okay? Okay. So again, in math, looking at the percent of green on or above grade level students as compared to last year and comparing the cohort. So if I'm a third grade teacher, I'm looking at those students who were in second grade last year. And then we add the percent changes here. Again, with implementation of a new curriculum, K through five. And still working with COVID gaps, I want to point out. For any questions on the I-Ready data? I don't know if you want to wait till the end for questions or?
Mr. Scunbray?
So when I came in to visit in the summertime, you guys had mentioned that there was always a problem with these assessments in fourth grade. Fourth grade was the only two places in all of the charts where there was a negative growth. Is that indicative of an issue in this school district? Or is it indicative of what you guys were talking about with the fourth grade problem?
It seems to be consistent.
Yeah, over the summer, we had looked at some national norms and we were seeing consistent patterns in the fourth grade.
With I-Ready data.
But of course, you know, we're constantly digging down on each grade level and where students are falling short and how we can provide targeted intervention. So next, as Dr. Burnham mentioned, part of our student learning goal is to implement and monitor the I-Ready Personalized Learning Platform. And we haven't really presented on this recently, so I just wanted to give you some snapshots here. So this is some of the data that we look at at the classroom level, at the grade level, and then at the district level. So we, for the first year, had kind of mandated, so to speak, that teachers have students working on I-Ready. They're looking to average from between 30 minutes to 45 minutes in reading and in math each week because that's what I-Ready recommends. And the Personalized Learning Platform is a self-adjusting, it adjusts to the student's performance. So after each benchmark, if a student is, you know, in the fourth grade, but they scored on grade three, it will give them lessons to move them closer to grade level and help close some of those gaps and work on some of their skills. So we're looking for students to spend a certain amount of minutes each week on I-Ready, as I mentioned, and then pass an average of a certain amount of lessons each week. So teachers monitor that. And then they can look to see, you know, individual students, how much time did you spend? And then on the next slide, this is just a snapshot, you know, of an individual student with the name taken off. So this would be a seventh grade student. The student has tested out of several of the domains in reading, but he or she is working on vocabulary and comprehension. So you can see that there would be 21 lessons below, but I am only showing five here on this slide. But the teacher can see how much time the student had to spend on each lesson. Did he or she pass? If a student has trouble with a particular lesson, I-Ready will shut it off. And the teacher can see that that lesson has been shut off. And the teacher will provide individualized instruction during intervention and then reset the lesson so that the student can go back to it. But, you know, as I'm constantly saying to teachers, I-Ready is just one tool. It's one tool that we're using. It's not meant to take the place of a teacher. If you think about 30 minutes per week, that's three times 10 minutes or two times 15. And yes, it is screen time, but it is something that is individualized to each student. So we wanted to make use of that, especially this year, to help us work towards moving students onto grade level. Another thing I wanted to show you was some of the data that we're collecting in addition to I-Ready. So this is, these are a few screenshots of some of the reports we can get from HMH. So the publisher who publishes into math and into reading, both of our curriculums. We can take a look, teachers can take a look at their classroom reports to see how many students scored above level, on level, or below level. They can click into their individual students and see performance. And actually, parents, which I'm going to, we emailed out instructions for parents to go on and see their own students' assessment results and even view the assessment and which questions their student got right or wrong. But I will also go over that in our Zoom drop-in. Then we are collecting this data at the district level too, so that we can look across, for example, second grade and see, okay, across these teachers, one of these questions really tripped up students. What's going on here? And then looking at that and coming planning too. Was the wording difficult? Did we not provide enough instruction in that area? So we can monitor it that way. So I also have a sample here of, this is just a copy of some of our second grade data. I deleted the columns with the student names. I want to show you what kind of data we're collecting at the district level. So here's a second grade sheet that we send out to teachers. And it would have students' DIBELS data. So, Deirdre McLean, I'm going to have you dump in and explain a little bit more about DIBELS on this note.
Sorry, you were doing so great. I was just going to sit back and listen. So with our DIBELS data, we do that for all students in grades K through 2 for every student. And then in grades 3 through 5, it is monitored closely, but not done for every single student. The purpose of it is with our MTSS staff and what we're moving with having a reading specialist and a math specialist in a school district, why that's important is because it's no longer about just identifying students who aren't doing well. It's more about why aren't they? And so it's, the teachers are having to shift how they teach reading. It's more based off of the science of reading. Because we have with the new digital media, you know, literacy standards, students are getting information so fast, faster than that normal progression. And so we're seeing so many leaps, like really highs. And we're trying to level it out to make sure the kids can, I guess, catch up with themselves because they have so much exposure to content. They know more vocabulary and words. And sometimes they just need a little extra help over the hump. And so by tracking this data, it allows us to see which kids need what type of intervention. And so a lot of this is more based off of the science of reading. And that's why the way we collect data and how we are providing reading intervention has changed a little bit, just to give like more context.
Thank you. So on these district data sheets, we also collect, we transfer I-Ready scores over so that when we're in a parent meeting, for example, we can look across at the students' DIBELS data. We can look at their current and past I-Ready scores. We also have their current and past MCAS scores here. And now, most recently, we've added the HMH assessments. So on, this is an example of Module 2 assessment. And so if the student got the question right, we've coded it in green. If it's completely wrong, in red. And then if you scored a one on a question that would be worth two points, we can see yellow. So again, we can look down across question. For example, here, it looks like number five on reading. A lot of students got completely wrong or mostly wrong, so we needed to take a close look on that one. For the writing assessments, we're breaking them down so we can look at the area of writing or the part of the writing that the student is struggling with, not just an overall writing score. And then we also have math. We had originally created the spreadsheets in a different way. I deleted the links here, but we would have links to each individual module assessment. So we can again look at their math.
Annika?
Yeah.
Can you go back to the ELA module assessment?
Yep.
And the good thing about this one is what, if you look on the very top where it has the standards, the ultimate goal is, we're going to have a bigger conversation in the summer about our report cards. But the ultimate goal, this will help grading to be less subjective so that we are really looking at the standard compared to, you know, saying what we are grading. And we'll have a concrete rubric that is showing mastery of certain standards.
So let me just, yep, just let me jump in to let everybody know what they're looking at. So what we're referring to is the code. There's a row that starts with RL.2.7.
I am blind.
It's too far.
So the slides should be in your folders.
They are.
The updated slides.
Oh, okay.
And these are also posted on the website.
If I go all the way out and go all the way in, or is it at the bottom? Oop, just was updated this minute.
So we'll be able to sort by standard or a teacher?
Now we can see.
So that's just the code number for a specific standard. So you can see that there are a whole bunch of different standards if you read across that line. Teachers know question number one ties back to, it's assessing standard RL.2.7. If you go to the curriculum framework from the state, all of those different frameworks are listed with their code number. What we're trying to do in terms of changes to the report card, which we hope to have fully in place next year, is that the language of the standard will be provided on the report card so that parents can see what the students are learning. So we're not going to give you the code number per se, but there will actually be text that describes what that standard is. Teachers use this data sheet to go back to, oh, I need to assess, I need to inform on report card about standard RL.2.7. I go back to my data, I look for all the questions on RL.2.7 and see how my students scored. And then I can report out their overall performance against that standard.
So...
I know, it's a lot.
When you say like standard, like, I'm thinking of like, you know, in first grade, how to pronounce consonant blends? Is that like, is that what you're talking about, something totally different?
That could be a standard.
Yeah.
I mean, that is one component of a standard.
Okay.
But I see what you're at, these are just all, so if you look back, you see the colors. The colors really help me see a picture, a big picture.
Right.
I can immediately see holes. And these are comprehension standards. These are standards based on how students will communicate their, like, if they're recessive, the information they're getting, and then they're expressive. So like to really target their instruction because so many kids have so many different kinds of strengths and weaknesses. And the curriculum, one size fits all. And so we've got to make that one size fit all, not fit all, you know, to fit every, because everybody has different kinds of, you know, it's a jagged profile. And so me and, Amy and I, as the math specialist, reading specialist, that's what we're looking at. Why are some students progressing quickly or not quickly? And what can we do to support them? It's not like about identification of special ed anymore. It's more about every student can achieve this standard. How are we going to build scaffolds to make sure everyone is getting, you know, quality education and achieving their real goals, if that makes sense?
And I can include a link, I'll add a link to these slides, to the standards. You know, you're looking at RL is reading literature and it's abbreviated in the standards. 2 is the grade level. And then 7 would be the number you'd be looking at. So I will, I will add that.
But when it gets, sorry. When it gets to the level of making this chart, what you guys in administration are doing, Dr. Burnham, is just seeing the holes. Like you know all of the, what the standards are, but you're just saying like, okay, like the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth column from the left, no one is in green, so we got to take a look at that. It's basically just like a heat map, sort of.
That's why it's colored, because numbers mess me up. But I do see the colors and I do see the pattern because I have, I mean, those standards are ingrained, that's what a reading specialist is. So I can really see where I'm needed, if that makes sense.
Yes.
And just, could you speak to why some number ones are coded green and some number ones are coded yellow?
Well, that's more, we have depth of knowledge questions. Some questions are like right in there kind of questions. And some questions are requiring more abstract inferencing thinking if they were to get partial credit. But there is a conditional formatting in my spreadsheet that as I collect of this standard, and I have more and more, we have a rubric that will say, we must kind of look at the writing more, it's going to increase the number.
So what number five was worth two points? So if you got one out of two, it's only half right. Whereas number one is only worth one point on the assessment. So if you got one, you got it completely right. So we coded in green, you see that it was worth two points?
Yeah, grade level will always be green. Whatever the conditional formatting for whatever spreadsheet you look at, on grade level would be green. And yellow is approaching, and that's like strategic. Red is intensive. That means there's, there is, it needs addressing.
So it's a little bit like, you know, you take a math test, you have to show your work. The answer you come up with might be the wrong answer, but when the teacher looks at your thought process and how you executed, they may see the mistake that was made, but you, your thinking around it was correct. You made a computation error, right?
So you get like a one as opposed to the two.
So what I'm saying too is that this team is looking that deeply. I can tell you that our math specialist is looking at every student's actual math work to determine if it's partial credit. Because if the answer's wrong, it would be no credit. But we're going back to make sure what's going on. Oh, the thinking was on, but computational error. Now, now we know, right? It's that level of depth of analysis of all of these assessments that's going on, on a regular basis. And all of this data is being compiled so that there's multiple ways to look at it. Either longitudinal for a student, whole class for a particular teacher, grade level. And that's why the color coding is really super important because quickly, you can see where the challenges lie, if that makes sense or if that helps.
And also with our new curriculums, we know the assessments are rigorous. They're tough. We want, they're vetted curriculums. It's where our kids should be. So we are having teachers and the specialists look at the assessments at the beginning of a module to see, okay, how is this skill going to be assessed? And then even during the module, making sure we clarify some of the vocabulary, for example, that's used in a question so that kids aren't getting things wrong because they're confused about the way it was asked. So that's part of kind of the learning curve of working through this curriculum for the first time. And again, looking at number five, which is the same standard as number one, there's an issue there. So we needed to take a close look at why kids got number five wrong across the board and number one right across the board, working with the same standard. So that's just part of why. standard. So that's, that's just part of why we find that data so useful.
And I think it's important, what Mrs. Scott hit on a little bit there, this curriculum is rigorous. It is on grade level. It is evidence-based on grade level. Our teachers haven't been working with this rigorous curriculum. This is a learning curve for our teachers.
Speaking of that, on this same slide, I just wanted to give everyone a snapshot of some of the work that goes on behind the scenes with these curriculums. So first, starting with math, Amy Ruboin, our math specialist, provides for each module in, in HMH into math, a whole set of resources for the teacher. Some of them come directly from HMH, and then others, Amy either makes or just prioritizes for teachers. So she takes, for example, this is one particular module, it's unit one, module one in fourth grade. This would be the lesson plan, for example, that teachers could follow. So day one, what are you doing for the first 15 minutes? Exactly what to do, links to the teacher's guide. So if they're logged into HMH, they can go right to their guide. But then moving through, like, here's the focus lesson, because part of the issue with these curriculums is that they give you so many things you could do, that we need to prioritize. What are the must dos, and what are the can dos, if you have extra time? So Amy's helping to prioritize in math, and there during literacy. We're working on a workshop model, so for part of the lesson, we're using workshop stations. Amy's helping them to tease out what should those stations be, what are the prerequisite skills, and then a reflection. So this is just like a quick snapshot. And then I wanted to show you here in her folder, you know, she's got the workshop stations, she's got materials that oftentimes we print and laminate in the curriculum office for them to use. We have a module overview for each unit with standards. So math looks different than literacy, it just, it just does. But this is an example of a math module. Some of the things that we provide to teachers, like I said, if you go back, there are all kinds of other, you know, activity bins, reteaching that we provide. Some of them come from HMH, like this one, and others we, we kind of manipulate to make it work for us. And then Deirdre on the ELA side does a similar thing. For example, this is a second grade ELA module, so you have the weekly plan. She's highlighting what she really needs them to pay attention to. Feel free to jump into, Deirdre. Estimating the time, which is one of the real challenges with the new curriculum, how much time are you spending on each thing? You can see these modules are broken down into weeks and lessons. We're highlighting in yellow, for example, across the reading, we must do these activities, and we're linked out to the teacher guide for HMH here. But some of the ones that are not highlighted are the can dos. And then we go through the writers workshop and down to some of the small group options for our teachers, which we're really starting to work on, or continuing to work on now as we move into the middle part of the year. What are some of our small group resources that we can really dig into and use with students?
So this evening, I provided a hard copy of one module, a unit, that is for math, I believe it's grade four, I think it's the second module. All of the resources that have been developed or compiled from the curriculum office and provided to teachers. Again, Mrs. Scott indicated some of them come directly from the resources provided from the HMH curriculum. Others, Mrs. Ruboin is developing. Same thing is true for Mrs. McLean with literacy. So I, I just wanted you to have a sense of the scope of work that goes into every single module for every single grade level. And again, all of this work is coming out of the curriculum office right now to alleviate some of the burden on teachers who are implementing two brand-new curriculum areas. Additionally, you know, we talk about the, the lesson being mapped out, how much time to spend, and, you know, Mrs. Scott referenced, if teachers had more time, there are other optional activities and materials that they can bring into their classroom on a particular unit. I think it's important to, to note that pacing has been a bit of a struggle, particularly with math this year. The teachers are having a hard time finding that stride, particularly early on in the year. It was taking us a bit longer to move through the units. We're paying attention closely to that pacing, because we've got to get back on pace. But it's, this point, I think, is one that provides you some context for looking at the math scores at the midpoint. We are behind pacing with the standards in math this year with first-year implementation. That won't be an issue as we move forward next year. This summer, there's a plan to work with teachers on that pacing, making adjustments, so on and so forth. But I think knowing that we've been a little bit challenged in getting that momentum in terms of a comfort level for teachers with this new curriculum in, in math, we were a little bit slow to get off the block at the beginning of the year. But we're fully aware of that, and we're making adjustments now, and we will make further adjustments prior to execution of year two of this curriculum.
And we're taking a close look right now. Amy and I were just talking about this today, where they're taking a look at what we need to prioritize prior to MCAS, for example, and making sure some of the modules we can combine and not necessarily break and assess. We can combine the assessments, so we're, we're working on moving forward. Mrs. Archibald mentioned the teacher learning walks. I wanted to give a snapshot of these. So we visited Rhinegold Elementary School in Fitchburg with our first through fifth grade teachers, or some of them. Last week, we were able to observe classrooms and debrief with their literacy coach, who they have for their building. And they're also using inter-reading, which is why we visited these particular schools. We visited yesterday Templeton Elementary School, who's also using inter-reading. Fitchburg's in their second year of using it. Templeton's in their fourth year, but three of the years, or actually, they're in their third year, and two of the years were interrupted, no, I'm sorry, they're in their fourth year, two of the years were interrupted by COVID. And last year was their first year, fully implementing the curriculum. A little anecdote is that they, at Templeton, they saw huge growth in the second grade, and when they reflected with the second grade teachers last year, they said, we kind of put our heads down and went through this curriculum with fidelity, and we were able to see real growth from it. So we're excited by hearing that. Next week, we're visiting South Street Elementary in Fitchburg with just our kindergarten teachers, since that is a pre-K building. But since Rhinegold didn't have kindergarten, we wanted to take the kindergarten on a second trip, like we did the other grade levels. And then something we're trying next week, also our in-district learning walks for teachers. So trying this at Turkey Hill first, where grade five, you see here, is going to be freed up to go with Deirdre to see the fourth and fifth, third grade ELA classes, and then each respective grade will go see the other two grade levels teach, using the HMH materials. And then in the next hour or so, the math teachers will be freed up to go with Amy and visit the other grade levels and have time to debrief. And the teachers have really been enjoying the walks.
Yes, and we're really excited. Like, I, I can't say enough about the teachers. I just want to do a shout out or whatever for them, because they're really, it's not me telling them what to do. It is us collaborating and seeing what works and doesn't work. And we're having really productive, professional conversations, deep, deep conversations about students and their learning. And we're all trying to get better at how we support students. And so this is voluntary, that the teachers are doing this, because we're trying to implement some new strategies that are different, and we're learning from each other. And this is not easy to do, you know, to have your peers come in and critically observe you, and then you take away. And it's shifting the culture, and it's amazing to see. And so I'm really excited about it. But they really are going above and beyond. I just wanted to say that.
And one of the main things we're, we're talking with the other teachers about is the, the materials beyond the core instruction. So some of the small group materials that there are so many to choose from, we're, we're trying to pick and choose as to what would be most effective. Another thing we wanted to give you a snapshot of is our revamp of the student support team this year. So this is just an example of an empty schedule that we're using. So we went from having an after-school model to a during-school model. So you can see here, for example, the primary, we have 15-minute slots blocked out for kindergarten. And we cover those kindergarten teachers' classes for the 15 minutes, so they can come down and speak about their student with the team who's around the table, and we can investigate how to best support that student. I know Deirdre and Amy attend these meetings. I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yes, this is that, that triage thing, when we're talking about, Amy and I are really looking at all of these data spreadsheets. So the student support team is for any student who is struggling in any area. It can be behavior, academic, math, or right, it can be a tiny, tiny component, or several components at once. But it's a team of teachers and educators and specialists, and we brainstorm, because we're looking at the data, we're seeing, we're showing patterns that we see, trying to figure out the best way to support a student. And, you know, sometimes I have the BCBA, a behavior therapist come in, or a social worker, or guidance counselor, and we're just all brainstorming together. And the outcome of that is, you know, to figure out an intervention, a targeted intervention to support the teacher and the parents. It's to bring out, you know, it's that bridge. And I think it makes a big difference. And it's a learning process and a learning curve, but so far, you know, I feel that it's making a difference.
And we've developed a number of different forms, from a referral form for teachers to a referral form for parents, so that the communication is streamlined, and we're collecting the, the data for the student support team as well. The during-the-day model has been going really well, because we don't have to worry about, oh, this teacher can't come because she has to go home and get her children off the bus, or we have to, you know, in the past, we've paid teachers to stay after school. But this way, you're, we know that the teachers are available every time we have SST to come and talk about the students and advocate for them. The multi-tiered systems of support that we're working on includes our Title I staff. So we have a, a teacher and two tutors at each school. Here, you can see the number of students being supported at each grade level in ELA and in math. I do want to point out that, that the models are a little different. They're doing some more push-in, where the Title I teachers go into the classroom versus pulling out all the time because of the, the schedule differences. So that's why the numbers are a little bit different. But we were able to offer the tutors some more hours this year, so we can support more students, and we revamp our groups following the benchmarks. I wanted to provide a snapshot down below of just one group from Turkey Hill of students, so I deleted the names on the left. But here's how they were scoring in each domain on iReady here on the left. So red is two or more grade levels below. And then here are their winter scores. You see a lot more green and yellow, which is moving them more towards grade level. So we were happy to see something like that. But we're looking closely at the data for, for those particular students too, and how we can refine lessons. Amy and Deirdre work with those staff members as well on exactly what materials and what lessons would be helpful for our interventions.
And if you look, that's what, you know, this is awesome. This is what we want to see. But each individual column is a component of reading. And so when we're doing interventions, we used to do a large comprehensive intervention, and now we're trying to do more targeted. So thinking of, these are the individual components of reading, and if we really want a strong reader, we need to make sure they're rock solid in all of these areas. And so that's how I determine the intervention with the interventionists to minimize these gaps.
So that was it for kind of a snapshot of some of the things that relate back to our student learning goals and to, you know, collecting data and working on interventions with students. Dr. Burnham, did you want me to talk briefly about the grants?
If you could, that would be great.
Sure. So we don't take advantage of every grant that comes from DESI, because it would be impossible. And sometimes we, we need to be careful about biting off more than, you know, we can handle. But when a grant comes up that we feel will be beneficial, and that we could really make quality use of the funds and what's expected of us from DESI, we, we apply. So right now, we have two applications in. One is for an accelerated learning, accelerated literacy grant from DESI, and we're looking to get new curriculum in grades six through eight for ELA through that grant, if we get it. So we're already previewing programs in anticipation of hopefully getting that grant on the ELA side at the middle school. We have submitted a grant related to the Student Opportunity Act. It's called the Evidence-Based Practices Grant, which would afford us the opportunity to hire a co-teaching coach to work with our general and special educators on co-teaching in the classroom, and again, providing supports for students, scaffolds with our curriculum, et cetera. And then we are working on applying for two additional grants. One is called the Playful Learning Institute. So it is, they only choose five districts across the state. It's competitive. But we're going to put in our application, and it would allow us to incorporate more play into our curriculum for grades pre-K through three. And it's modeled after Boston Public Schools, which are currently doing this, but we would work with our current HMH curriculums. Finally, there's a deeper learning grant that came up, and that is connected to continuing curriculum work. So again, instead of biting off something new, we're looking to hopefully be able to have a group of teachers work with us over the summer to dig deeper into these modules and figure out, how can we better support the struggling learners here? How can we challenge the learners who are ready for more? How can we customize assessments? Just reflecting on the, the modules that we've now, we will have been through for the first year, but digging deeper there. So we're excited about those possible opportunities. And again, we're, you know, constantly considering how working with a grant would benefit the district. And there have been opportunities we passed up, because we thought it was, you know, too much required of us and, and not, not a good use of the funds.
Thank you. That's a lot of information. Are there any questions for our curriculum people?
I've got a lot, but not going to work tonight.
I mean, I think we all know how much work goes into it, but oh my gosh, this is overwhelming. Like, great job to you, because I don't know how you managed to get this all done in a school year. This is unbelievable. And apparently, I'm going to fail fourth grade math, because I've no idea the answer to half of these.
There is an extraordinary amount of work being done, not only by this particular team. Seriously, we are so fortunate to have this particular curriculum leadership team. Really. They're doing extraordinary work, all in support of teachers and students. And the level of work that's being done by our teachers every single day, directly with the students, but also engaging with the curriculum leadership team constantly. The level of support that's coming from building administrators around teachers, working at this level, day in and day out. This is a goal, you know, and it's something that's written on paper. We're living it every single day, 150% every single day. I don't have any doubt that over time, we will see our students achieving at the level that we want to see. I've said this repeatedly. All sorts of things need to be in place to be able to operate at this level. They're in place. It's still not going to happen overnight. operate at this level. They're in place. It's still not going to happen overnight. But they are doing extraordinary work every single day. And I thank you all very, very much.
Mr. Leighton?
So I also agree with the rest of the committee too. Amazing work. One thing I would like to see in the future is just continuous and improvement also on just the communication with the parents, so that I think a lot of parents, when they first see it, they see the yellow often, especially in the fall, where their child is not at the level yet. But they should also not be at that grade level yet because they're still learning all of that material. So I think getting that across to parents, I think, is going to be huge, and then there'll be more buy-in. And also, just having those opportunities for parents to help out their child, identifying ways that they can help to try to get them out of the red or out of the yellow. I think that'll have more parent buy-in as well.
Yeah, that's absolutely something we want to make sure we consider. We're holding the Zoom drop-ins, but you know, for any parent listening too, we are more than happy to meet with you and go over your child's data and talk further about.
And it doesn't have, I know that we talk a lot about NTSS and SST, and I mean, parents can come anytime and say, you know, they can refer their child for SS, Student Support Team meeting, if you want to dive into data and talk about it. It, you know, it doesn't have to be. We're starting small, and we, but this is a culture shift of how we can engage families to be a part of the learning, instead of just receiving a grade that doesn't mean anything. Really talking about how your child is as a learner, and teaching them how to advocate for themselves as learners. Like, I mean, the world's changing fast, and we've got to be able to teach them to advocate for themselves of what they need.
And I think too, that the change in the report card that we're working on will also be huge in terms of communicating with parents about how their students are performing in a very specific way. Additionally, just anecdotally, we've had several meetings for the family-school partnership work that we're doing. And we do have a parent who's part of the team. And a couple of meetings ago, it became obvious to us that we need to clarify, because there's some lack of clarity around the word homework. What do we mean when we say homework versus what do parents think we mean when we say homework? It became clear to us that through the focus groups, that the coaches that we're working with facilitated, some parents are clear that, oh, Turkey Hill, there's no homework. But other parents are not clear. But there is homework. The kids have to read 20 minutes every night. Well, that's not homework. We're encouraging you to encourage your child to read 20 minutes each night. And then there are other parents who believe that the homeschool connection with all those links to things that families can choose to do if they want to engage with their kiddos around what they're learning in school. Some parents perceive that that's homework. So we need to get clear and communicate for parents what we mean when we say homework, and what the purpose of the request to have students read 20 minutes every night versus the sharing of information that connects back to the curriculum that families can choose to partake in, right? It's not all homework. So that was, that was like one of those lightbulb moments, like, oh, gosh, we need to get real clear for parents what we mean when we say homework, when there is no homework. So it's a constant evolution, if you will, around what is it that we need to get clear for parents? What information do we need to provide them? Because, you know, it was related that, oh, all that stuff with the new curriculum, it's overwhelming, right? So again, it's the feedback that we're getting from families and making that adjustment as we go so that we can get to a place where it is clear for everybody.
Well, I thank you very much for all your work. I know that this is an accelerated pace to get everybody up and running, and things that, you know, normally would take a lot longer. You're spinning into this year as quickly as you can, and we appreciate the hard work. And I firmly believe we're going to see the result in the scores, no question.
So I'm not sure if you're all able to, and maybe you need time to process through it some more, the connection back to that student learning goal and all the things that we outlined that we would be working on largely was covered in this presentation. We know it was a longer presentation, but it kind of covered two topic areas tonight, the progress on goals, in addition to an update on the assessment results and how our students are doing. But as you continue to process through all this, if you have any questions, feel free to send them to me by email or pop into the office, and we can review there too.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Right. Next on our agenda is our draft school calendar. I'm noticing there's no action on this, that this is discussion, and we will take action on this at another time, I presume?
So just a little bit of background on how we got here. This year, we had a calendar committee that was comprised of some members of the teacher union, essentially one building, a union building rep from each school, working with administration to move through a first draft. And then each principal shared the draft with their building leadership team, including teachers, and their school advisory councils, including teachers and parents. Additionally, we shared this with our PD committee to give their thoughts on some of this as well. So this has been vetted to that level already, and now it's more, you know, it's, now it's out for parents to review, for you to review. And we can field any questions that come in from any parents relative to the calendar or from the committee, and make revisions if needed and bring it back. Or if no revisions are needed, we can vote it next meeting.
When we discuss the calendar proper, would there be time to discuss the concerns raised by our guest?
Yes. I can say that my communication with the rabbi, she provided specific dates for this next calendar year. And I did go back to check against what was here in this drafted calendar, and none of the events that are scheduled, open houses and so on, conflict with any of the dates that the rabbi pointed out for next year. That said, it's also important to make sure that administrators, in terms of day-to-day operations for next year, as they're planning math nights, or literacy nights, or any number of other events, take a look at and be mindful of those dates on the calendar. I also shared with the rabbi that we produce a document called the Professional Planner. It's a rather lengthy document that we provide to the staff when everybody comes back at the start of the new year. It includes all kinds of information that they may need in order to plan out their year. It includes the courses that we offer, the graduate course offerings for the year, so that they can plan accordingly if they want to register for those. We have teacher workshops that are in there. We have information on all of the different committees and their meeting dates and times, so that if you're on that committee, you can book that into your calendar. You can make arrangements if there are after-school meetings for daycare and so on and so forth. We also include in that document all of the state holidays. We include the school calendar. We include the state testing schedule, so MCAS, the access test for our EL students, our English language learners, all included in there. And we have a really rather comprehensive list of all religious holidays for all religions. And that was one thing that was noted in our equity audit, that you won't see noted in the audit recommendations, because we do include, we are very inclusive with that. So teachers have that comprehensive list of the religious holidays so that they can plan accordingly. They should know their student population in their classes, and if they're not sure of a religious background of a student, because we don't typically ask the kids to fill out a survey indicating what religion they might practice, if a student, let's say, approaches the teacher and says that they practice a particular holiday, the teacher can go to that list and verify that in fact, yes, that is the holiday. And students can request some flexibility around assignments or tests that might be given on or around that holiday. Very good point was raised, though, that not all students feel comfortable. So I really do think that it's going to be incumbent upon us to ensure that we include language in our handbooks so that parents are aware that you just need to approach the teacher with this request. Additionally, we want to continue to work with our students so that they can advocate for themselves and know that it's okay to advocate for themselves. And I also did indicate to the rabbi that the expectation of the administration for staff is that teachers do provide students this flexibility when they're asked for that flexibility. And if that is not happening, then that needs to be brought to the attention of the administration so that we can address that concern.
Is there any thought about adding comments about calendar issues and religious holidays to like the new parent orientations, like the in-person meetings?
No, we absolutely could.
I found that to be really, really valuable, especially the one that they did at the primary school. And if, you know, like, I basically, my wife takes very good notes, much better than mine. But that was the meeting where I really paid attention, and I thought, you know, maybe that would be a good place to key that up so that the parents don't have to, so the parents can do the advocating instead of the kids.
Absolutely. Good point.
I would also make the point that staff needs be on an equal plane as the needs of the students, because I know sometimes that is quite difficult. I think it's important. So in looking at the calendar, outside of the religious holiday issue, religious observances, on April 12th, is that a half-day or a whole day? It's coded as a whole day, and then I think it said half-day. So I was confused.
Oh, we would have to change the coding. It does notate that it's an early release day for PD.
Yeah, and, but it's coded the other way.
Yep. So we'll make that correction.
That would have to be corrected. And in additional parent concerns, there was a discussion about making a half-day prior to the December vacation. A parent suggested that. The reason why you wouldn't do that would be time on learning, I would assume.
Well, it's time on learning, but the holidays fall at different times, so the parent raised the issue relative to the Christmas holiday.
Right. And it's no place near that.
Correct.
Yeah.
So in other words, if, let's say, we were in school until the 23rd of December, every year when we take a look at the calendar and where dates fall, we certainly can and do have discussions about half-day, half-day PD day. We did, maybe four or five years ago, there was an early release PD day on December 23rd. Students go home early. Teachers stay for professional development. It's not the most optimal time to have teachers attentive and invested in their professional development.
Yeah.
So that's why we moved away from that, because honestly, we don't have, over the course of a year, a lot of time for professional development with our staff. So we really want to optimize that time. This year, there was, with the Christmas holiday falling on Mondays, it was Sunday, it was Sunday this year. It would fall on Monday. Thinking of last day of school on a Friday, when the holiday, it doesn't fall until Monday, we felt that was a reasonable amount of time to have the full day on the Friday.
I guess the point I want to make is, if there are additional early release days, that affects the time on learning.
Time on learning.
And we're pretty close in general, aren't we? There's not a lot of leeway.
No, we don't, we can certainly take a look at that again.
I mean, on this calendar, it wouldn't make a difference, I don't think, but in general.
The challenge too for us is, and we found this during the hybrid year, we did have fewer minutes time on learning that particular year. But there were no snow days or delayed openings due to weather, because we were allowed to do remote that year. We're not allowed to do remote anymore. I did have that question recently from a parent with all the inclement weather that we had for that little stretch of time, around, how about those blizzard bags? So the state has moved away from that. They are not allowing for that. They are not allowing for remote snow days. It's not an option for us. So I did provide that explanation. But we do have to be careful about ensuring that we have enough structured time on learning to allow a little bit of wiggle room for those delayed openings, or those early dismissals because water main broke.
Yeah, I was going to say.
So we do need to be careful and leave a little bit of a buffer and not be right down to the wire with our calendar. We're just meeting our structured time on learning.
Right.
It's a balancing act. We could take a look at it again and see if we...
Yeah, like for this year, I don't think that that's an issue. But the other comment that particularly, that parent made in particular, was a thought about a half-day for the teachers on the last day, which, I'll be honest, I really don't agree with, because when do you wrap things up?
Exactly. So that's what I explained.
Like the wrapper-upper.
When I responded, that email came from a teacher who is also a parent. And that was, that was the explanation. The half-day at the end of the year, the kiddos go home that last day, half-day. And then the teachers have that time to pack up the classroom for the summer, get things packed up, out of the way, so that the custodians can empty the room for the summer, clean the floor, clean the whole room, restore all of their things, which is, on the flip side, when we get back at the start of the year, part of that first day back for staff is time is dedicated for them to get their rooms.
Undo it, yeah.
You know, many teachers do come in towards the tail end of the summer to do some of that work, setting their rooms up again. But I would imagine, as a parent, you don't want teachers starting to pack up their room that whole last week of school, so that dismissal comes and everyone leaves the building. That's, that's the nature of the time spent for staff on that last day after student dismissal.
So those were my comments on the calendar. Is there anything else?
Dr. Burnham, may I make a comment?
Absolutely. Ms. Peterson is the one who takes care of orchestrating the graphics for the calendar every year.
I just wanted to make the comment that originally on the school calendar, the nature's classroom dates that are, were listed as 10-2 to 10-6. I have since found out from Ms. I have since found out from Mrs. Connery, who is a fifth grade teacher and who runs the nature's classroom planning. She has since sent me an email saying that these dates have now changed to September 25th through the 29th. So I can make that change on the calendar and repost it and also drop it into the folder as well.
And we're going to have to take a look at Mrs. Connery's plans for those dates relative to the religious holidays.
Right. Yeah.
Not very soon after they've started school. That's not ideal. They're just back at school and they're going, huh, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
It's team building.
Yeah, I guess. But I just want them to settle into the school routine first and then you're kind of uprooting them and putting them back out the last week of September.
They're pros, they're fifth graders.
I guess. It happens.
But we will definitely revisit that relative to the...
Religious holidays.
The religious holidays will circle back around with Mrs. Connery and take a look at that again.
Rosh Hashanah, Friday, September 15th and Sunday, September 17th.
But that should work with that one, with those dates. So why don't we take a look at those things and then bring it back for the next, for the next meeting? Okay? Thank you very much for your perspective, Rabbi. We appreciate that. And it's always a good reminder that we need to be inclusive of everyone's needs. And your comment about the kids advocating for themselves sometimes is difficult and I can see that. So I thank you.
Just wanted to make a note that Yom Kippur is the 25th of September. That's the big one, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to have to look at that and see what can be done there. Okay. So now we're at permission to post. Mr. Cassidy, you've had quite a vacation over there.
Good evening. I'm Mike Cassidy, HR Director. And in front of the committee tonight is a position we've talked about from time to time, which is a concession stand monitor. As we rolled out the plan for the concession stand for the spring, we need coverage to enforce Board of Health safety regulations, among some other things. We've spent some time developing what this position is going to look like. We don't, we can't determine how many hours and the burden it's going to be on an individual. So for now, we're proposing that it's an hourly position for the spring season. And then we'll look at, I know we had talked about making this a stipend position. I want it to be fair for the employee that gets the stipend and I certainly want it to be fair for the school department. We don't want to overpay and we certainly don't want to underpay. So it's kind of a measuring stick this spring. That's the way I'm looking at it. So obviously, they're going to be monitoring the activity in the kitchen or in the concession stand. And that looks like setting up systems for the group to report during the event. And also, this person will be doing spot visits to the kitchen to making sure that they're following regulations. They'll be creating relationships with the groups, identifying these serve safe individuals within the group, having that communication. We have visions of creating some sort of Google Doc. So the organization would be bringing a device, logging in, temperature checks during the event so they can be reviewed the next day or even that night by the person. So this person would be, we need help kind of setting this up. So it's an extra hand of making sure they'll be there for the Board of Health inspection, distribution of keys, setting up the kitchen, setting up all the new equipment. You know, unfortunately, you know, this person may be reporting out to the business office and to the facility department, any corrective actions that may have to take place with a group and/or with the facility. So maybe the sink is clogged. So it's really, it's going to be a communication internally too. And we're anticipating this person would be closing the concession stand.
At the end of the season.
At the end of the season. So the groups will be charged on a fair basis, within the, I forget, you voted on the rates that we would be charging. It was $50 per hour. I can't imagine that if we set it up correctly, that it's a $50 charge every time someone turns on the concession stand. So we're really trying to create systems that they can double check. They may, when there's a spot visit, there may be a $50 charge, but there's going to be systems in place that will alleviate that cost for that group. So we'll be, you know, we're going to work with that group. If they set up the systems and they work cooperatively with this person, it's going to reduce that rate. So it's not going to be overwhelming for our partners who are going to be using the concession stand.
The other rationale for moving forward with it for the spring as an hourly paid position, we don't know how easy or difficult it might be to recruit people to take on this role. So potentially, doing it hourly might allow us to sort of job share, if you will, to make sure that we have that coverage for oversight.
The funding for this position will be coming out of the facility revolving account. There is some funding there to start the position. So as we move forward and get receipts from the groups, we should be able to cover that.
Oh, that sounds like a good idea to me. Anyone have any questions? So can I have a motion to approve the concession stand monitor?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. We might have a better title next time we repost it, okay?
Oh, it works. It works. We know what you mean. There we go. Okay, next is school choice openings.
So for the last few years, we've been pretty conservative in bringing forward recommendation for the number of seats, for your approval and participation in the school choice program. We've been conservative because we're still monitoring impact from COVID and we want to make sure that we can fully support the needs of all the students. That said, in recent years, we have not had to hold a lottery for the number of seats. In other words, we are receiving fewer applications for choice seats than seats available. When we receive applications in excess of the approved number of seats, then we hold a lottery. There's a whole process outlined for that. Applicants are made well aware of what that process looks like. Should we, again, exceed the number of seats with applicants, lottery, and then anybody who isn't pulled for a seat through the lottery would go on a waitlist? Oftentimes, you know, we notify the individuals that they've been selected for an open seat. They eventually may get back to us and say they are going to decline. Seat opens and then we pull somebody from the waitlist. So again, this year, bringing forward for your consideration, a recommendation to open five seats for next year's grade nine. Based on class size right now, you know, we have about 130 eighth grade students currently. Typically, we lose, give or take, 25 to Monty Tech. We may lose a few others to other high schools. So we're anticipating that the class size, even, you know, taking these five seats on, would still be in and around 100, 105 students. We don't believe that this low number of students will impact class sizes or diminish our capacity to provide support services for our students. I'm also going to recommend that you give consideration to carrying forward the one unfilled school choice seat for what will be next year's 11th grade. So currently, there's, for the current 10th grade, there's one approved school choice seat that is not filled. You can consider leaving that open so that an 11th grader would have the option. You can also decide that you're not going to leave that open and we're only going to take in ninth graders. All of the school choice seats that were approved for the current ninth grade, they've all been filled. So there's no open seats to carry forward with that particular class. Additionally, when we talk about school choice every year, we also like to have the committee take a vote to allow any Lunenburg student who is in their 11th or 12th grade year who moves out of town to remain as a Lunenburg High School student until their graduation from Lunenburg High School. So those are the considerations brought forward for you this evening.
Mr. Leighton?
So out of the, for the class, you mentioned the class of 2026 that all five seats were approved and filled. Do you think that was a unique scenario, that particular year, that particular class? Does this often happen that they, that we fill all the seats?
Ms. Peterson is still on the meeting. She's the one that coordinates all of the choice students. So historically, Liz, you know, the last maybe five years or so, and of course, COVID years are in there, you want to talk about historically, the kinds of patterns that we see relative to filling all the available seats?
Sure. Historically, in the last five years, and this is including, like Dr. Burnham said, the COVID years, we have typically pretty much filled the ninth grade seats. That being, that is a very fluctuating year we see for students that move around sometimes to different schools. And we have a lot of interest from parents that call us about school choice within that grade level. So typically, that is a grade level that does fill up pretty quickly, I have to say. Now, that's not saying that during the school year, sometimes a student may drop out of the program. But if that happens, that opens up that seat and then we will take in another student if we have someone that is interested at that time. So the guidance secretary, Katie Berry, and I work closely together on school choice for whoever may be interested. 10th grade typically in the past, we have seen lower interest in, although I have to say, this particular year, we have every seat filled except one. So this was, this was a little bit surprising for us in 10th grade for this year.
So just a follow-up. So what would be the downside of recommending, say, an additional five seats for grade nine?
I will defer to Dr. Burnham on that because I really do think that there are many considerations when you're considering five additional seats.
Yeah, and Mr. Santry is also on the line this evening, so I'd invite him to jump in here as well. I think that we're just being really cautious, trying to keep class, overall class size down so that we can make sure that in these years following the COVID impact, that we're able to keep class sizes at the high school consistent with the class sizes that we see at all the other grade levels, as well as be able to better meet the needs of the kiddos that are struggling. So Mr. Santry, do you want to offer any thoughts as to why not go with a higher number for the ninth grade?
Sure. Tim Santry, Principal, Lunenburg Middle High School. Thank you. Well, just as you said, Dr. Burnham, it's a delicate balance. So if we opened up 10 choice seats at one grade and then we had an influx of students moving in, and then, you know, hindsight being 2020, now we're looking at a grade level that's got 132 in a place where it could have been 122. And then that might have an impact on our budget or we're now having to hire another teacher. So it is that balance between keeping the seats at a level where we can manage it and then providing opportunities for other kids. So I agree with not offering an additional five at that spot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Schoolenbrady?
So I have not been on school committee when this issue has been talked about, so I have two questions. Number one, how does the funding work for school choice? And number two, once somebody has gotten a slot for school choice, does that slot apply to them until they graduate?
Yes.
Okay.
And how does the funding work? Basically, these students are on our rolls and they're in our head count for the formula for Chapter 70 funding.
So they just count like a Lunenburg student?
They count just like a Lunenburg student. And they have all the rights and privileges of a Lunenburg student.
But the district they live in has to pay us a tuition, right?
That's...
The district that they live in lose the money for that student.
But they don't pay tuition? Oh.
Mr. Cassidy, any thoughts to offer relative to the following of the funding for school choice?
The funding has shifted from DESI so that we don't get a check from Lemonster.
From the district.
Yeah, from the district itself.
No.
So they move them. So our students that leave, the town accountant doesn't write a check to them, that is reconciled at the state level?
Because the town always tells us how much money they spent in tuition for our school choice students. So they're sending money somewhere. No?
No. I think it's totally reconciled, it's with the state. They don't get the money.
So when the town tells us they're spending money on school choice students that leave, they're not?
Yeah, we don't get, the state sends it, it comes off of the Chapter 70. So it's money that we're not getting.
So our, suppose we're held harmless this year. Suppose we're in that category. So it's $100 a head. So we only get $100 for each of our school choice students?
No.
That's, I'm confused.
The value is about, last I thought, I understood, is about $5,000 per student. Although that might have increased. I'm not sure.
Yeah, that is, so that's part of the budget. The new rate for the students, for school choice students hasn't been decided yet.
So does that get folded into the Chapter 70 money?
It's treated separately, but it's not, it's calculated by DESI.
So the money comes into the town, not to the school?
It comes to the schools. Yeah.
So when our kids go to school choice, that... So when our kids go to school choice, that money is, we have to pay that, but it's paid through DESI.
DESI.
I'm trying to understand this.
It's taken off of our Chapter 70.
Okay. All right.
And then it, it finds its way to the school choice account through town hall?
As kids, as students come into the district.
Okay. Thank you. I had that wrong.
So, I guess, what's the benefit of school choice to the district? Or more importantly, what's the benefit of school choice to current Lunenburg students?
That's an interesting question. I'm not sure how I want to frame an answer to that just, just yet.
You don't have the answer to that.
Relative to the broader benefit to the district to participate at all, there are, there are things that the district funds with our school choice account. So as an example, teachers through their contract have the right to reimbursement for courses. The funds for the reimbursement come out of the school choice account.
Oh, so it just basically gives us a little extra money?
Again, health insurance benefits for our food service staff are also funded through school choice.
It's, school choice supports course reimbursements, trainings, insurance if, if needed. Like, for next year, there's a portion of school choice is allocated to pay for that, the health insurance amount. Any computer equipment that, that may fall outside the budget is something that is supported by that. Those are the big ones.
Right. So if revenues coming into our budget from school choice, let's say we didn't participate at all, eventually that account would, would dwindle down to a zero balance, and then we'd be really obligated to find ways to cover those contractual benefits through our local budget.
Got it.
Is it, is it correct to say approximately it's about $5,000 a student historically? Does that sound right?
We can, we can get the exact amount.
Yeah, we'll double-check on that.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's not the, the full amount you typically see from per pupil expenditure?
Right. If you take a look at our per pupil expenses, on average, it's close to three times that amount, which is why, again, we could take in more students, we could have more school choice revenue coming in. The challenge then is to keep class sizes down and to be able to meet the needs of all the students, support services, et cetera, et cetera. We may end up having to hire more staff, outfit more classrooms, right? Which, which is why we're trying to be really conservative right now. If you go back historically, I want to say in the 2018, 19 school year, so it would have been February of 2019, I believe I came in with a recommendation of 10, 10 for grade nine, and I think it was another 10 for grade 10. At that time, though, we were in a different situation. We were looking at having to make cuts to programming based on our, our budget at that time. Again, this is being really conservative in terms of not wanting to see the overall class size of any class, right, the class of 2027, so on and so forth, get too big. And then, in order to keep class sizes at a manageable level or provide services, because here, here's the thing, we don't get to select, we don't get to say, oh, this student is coming with an IEP and services, you're not selected for school choice in Lunenburg. If they apply?
Okay, good.
They apply, and whatever needs come with them, come with them.
Okay.
And they get all of the same rights and privileges as all of our Lunenburg resident students get, because essentially, they become a Lunenburg school student.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're, we're just being a little cautious still navigating the post-COVID situation.
So do we need a motion?
We would need a motion to approve particip, thank you, Mr. Cassidy, for straightening that out. I had that wrong for a million years. We would need a motion to approve participation in school choice with the number of choice seats that was presented, and also to allow Lunenburg students in grades 11 and 12 to remain through their high school career should they move out.
And again, you can choose to approve the recommended number or a different number for next year's ninth grade class. You can choose to approve or not approve carrying that one open seat into grade 11. You could also recommend another, another number, and I suppose if you wanted more time to think about it, you could also choose to table this and bring it back for a vote at the next meeting.
I have no issues opening up the five seats and also carrying that one unfilled seat, and definitely no issues with allowing the students 11 through 12 to remain, being able to graduate.
So with that said, I'll make a motion to recommend that we open five seats for the grade nine class of 2027, and recommend that we carry forward one unfilled school choice seat for the class of 2025, no seats for the class of 2026.
And allow?
And also allow Lunenburg students in grades 11 and 12 to remain at LHS through graduation, should they move out of Lunenburg.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Santry.
You're welcome.
So now, we're on to first read of policies. Now, I know we generally do not read the policy, however, we have had discussion amongst parents on these policies. I am happy to share in the reading, because I know it's a lot of reading. Oh, we're reading all of these tonight? Well, we're definitely reading the busing one.
We can make a motion, I feel like we can make a motion to wave some.
And we have had comments on the, the policies dealing with 3701 and 3702 from parents. We can just discuss those questions, we don't have to read the whole thing. How's that for a compromise?
I'll start with the transportation.
Okay, let's go with the transportation first.
Fiscal management and non-instructional operations 3000, transportation 3600, transportation duties and responsibilities of the school committee 3601. The purpose of school transportation is to get pupils from home to school and back in an efficient, safe, and economical manner. Other purposes include the provision of transportation for academic field trips in direct support of the curriculum, transportation for the support of the co-curricular program, athletics, music, drama, and the like. As of August 2023, the Lunenburg Public Schools will transport all K through 6th grade students. Grade 7 through 12 students will be provided transportation on, by, on or by, I'm guessing that was?
I, I have a grammar fix on that one for later. Just keep going.
I'm going to go by a deadline set forth by the district. The Lunenburg Public Schools does not provide transportation for preschool students unless the service is required by the student's individualized education plan, IEP. Bus policy. One, bus applications. Students' families wishing for their students to be bused shall submit a bus application. Number one, all students in Lunenburg Primary School and Turkey Hill Elementary Schools shall be bused if and only if a bus application is submitted on their behalf by the deadline date set forth from the district. Two, all other students, grades 7 through 12, shall be bused based on their application being submitted by the deadline. Four, okay, well, yeah, once the bus application deadline has passed, no additional bus applications shall be reviewed or granted. Five, should the number of applications exceed the number of available seats, the district will determine bus assignment based on the date and time of application. Two, bus application due date. Bus applications are due by 5:00 PM on May 1st. Applications sent after this date shall not be reviewed or granted. One, in the event that multiple applications are submitted on behalf of a student, only the first application shall be counted. Three, emergency bus applications. In the event of a newly arising condition that necessitates busing of a student after the application deadline, the district shall consider such applications in their sole discretion. Four, outreach. The school district, based on known need, shall conduct individual outreach to families with children that may be unable to complete this bus application form. Five, finality of decisions. All bus application decisions by the school district are final. Six, conflict and sever, apparently I cannot say that word, severity, or whatever. Nothing in this policy shall be interpreted as conflicting with state or federal law or regulations. In the event that some provision of this policy is deemed unlawful, all other provisions shall be given their full force and effect, approved April 27, 2005.
Thank you very much. My, my grammar fix, let me find it. It was grade 7 and 12, it was at the beginning. Grade 7 and 12 students will need to register for transportation by our deadline to receive transportation. Is that the same thing?
Yes.
It just was very awkward.
Can we also change where it's bus policy one, bus application, and then the bullets be A, B, C, and D?
Yes.
Because that's just way too confusing.
Yes.
So, in that second paragraph, I thought you were mentioning, grade, grade 7 to 12 students will be provided transportation on a, by a deadline date? It didn't?
Yeah, that's, that's the grammar fix I thought I made. Yeah. Grade 7 to 12 students will need to register for transportation by our deadline to receive transportation.
Okay.
I mean, somebody else can make it better, but I...
Yeah, I just didn't see it.
I fudged around with that.
Yeah, that was your language, I gotcha.
Yeah. I fudged around with that for a while to try and come up with something that was going to work.
So, I guess my next thing would be, okay, under bus policy, number one, it mentions the Lunenburg Primary School and Turkey Hill student, elementary schools, students. Number two, it goes to category of grades 7 through 12. I like the, I would rather have it be consistent?
Yeah.
In one and two?
Okay.
Whether we do it by grades or by school?
Well, because...
Kindly towards school, but maybe it's even both, too, to be clear to the parents and students.
Grade 6 had to be included at the beginning, at number one.
Yep. So we strike the...
As by law.
Names of the schools.
Yeah.
And say, in...
K to 6.
Grades K-6.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I don't know if you'd want to do all other students, I think that might be, I would just go to the all students, grades 7 through 12.
Yeah, there's no reason to say all the other. The, number five, all bus application decisions by the school district are final. I understand the reason for that, but I also understand that there's generally some form of appeal for almost anything. I would think an appeal to the school committee is something that we should consider.
Are you prepared for the influx of people who are going to think, I have the right to appeal, because we're going to get many?
It's gonna, well, it's gonna be, the first year is gonna be like three nights of listening to people, and I understand that.
So my thought is, I don't think that's on us. I think us is, we're the policy. I think, change the language to superintendent. I think we put it on the superintendent. Any appeal can go to the superintendent.
Then who are they, then who is the school district? Isn't that the superintendent's office? So she can't appeal herself, and that was my...
Well, I think people could still put an appeal to the superintendent and have a meeting with the superintendent, like she's, she might not be making those application decisions, is my thought.
What do you think, Tony?
So the one concern that I have that I think your suggestion addresses is that if we make it so that, and I, I intended the school district to be Dr. Burnham. So if we make Dr. Burnham's decision final, then they could always appeal to us about, you know, something related to the way in which Dr. Burnham made the decision, as opposed to the bus decision she made, and then we would have to deal with that as being the entity that supervises the superintendent. So they could say, you know, like, she was late to this meeting, and we think that's inappropriate for a superintendent. So I think that if you have like a clear appeals process, then it just ends the thing, and if it's three, three nights of meetings, but we get it right, then we get it right.
And, and, and that, my, my thought was that it is, that there needs to be some other person to go to.
I just want to point out, too, that these appeals could happen throughout the school year.
It's not the first three nights, it's gonna...
Oh, yeah. I understand, this could be a big bag of worms.
I want everybody, yeah, exactly, think about what, putting yourself in that position, no matter whether you say yes or no, you're going to basically say that, okay, now we're going to decide whether we're going to disagree with the superintendent or not on our decision.
It would have, see, now my, I, I talked through this with myself, for the most part, but my husband was kind of listening. And my thought was, there would have to be criteria. And maybe it's a bigger bag of worms than we, I, I just, I just have a problem with there being no appeal. No, to be perfectly honest, I, I just, I didn't want people to say, well, she doesn't like me, so she didn't appeal, so she didn't give me a decision. And that, I, I want to list that.
I think that's covered in number three. Because otherwise, the appeal is, I didn't get my application in on the deadline.
Oh, well, that's not a appeal.
Please, right? Exactly. But if there are newly arising conditions that necessitate the busing of a student, then the district shall consider those applications. But essentially, then the decision would be final. Whatever decision is made in those cases, like someone might say, well, it's an emergency because my transmission died in my car, and now I need the bus. Well, that's a temporary thing.
Right, right.
Potentially, I, I could put them on for a period of time versus another situation where my child was just diagnosed with a heart condition, and they had been walking, but now they can't.
That's different.
I, I need bus transportation. Or temporarily, oh, my, my child has a sprained ankle and is in a walking boot and really can't walk the distance to school, so on and so forth. I mean...
Or someone's job has changed.
Right.
Or like a divorce.
See, this is the thing, and now everything's fair game.
Mm-hmm.
Right? People are going to come forward with everything, because we've seen it.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Peterson is still on the call. This essentially comes back to what we've been doing, except people are not okay with the final decision.
But if it's, if they're not okay with the final decision, I would prefer them to be mad at us than you.
I think they still can be, but I don't want them to put their dirty laundry, hey, I got a divorce, and they have to, got to come to a school committee to explain that to us, and that's why the superintendent's not doing it.
I also think, you know, one thing that we could put in here if we had an appeal provision, is that, you know, the, like, make a very short list of things that are proper grounds for appeal. You know, like, if they didn't get their application in on time, that's not grounds for appeal. Sorry.
Well, that's the thing, we already had a parent reach out saying, I, I don't want to fill out all these forms for our kids, my kids, I've got many kids in the district. So is that, or, so is that parent going to now appeal if they don't fill out that application because they don't want to fill out the paperwork? Well, I'm going to appeal because you really did mean what you said, and now my kid doesn't have transportation. And I think you're, you're going to have...
We have to make the point that we mean what we say, and this is different, and we're not... we're not doing what we did last fall, or the fall before. That is not happening again. So, we have to make this fair for everybody. And I think your May 1st deadline, I think, is just fine. And I wonder if that should be, you know, you said by the deadline, maybe it should be reiterated a million times in here. Every time you say by the deadline date, say by May 1st, so that that is in everybody's face. Because we can't have that happen again. We, we, we mean it. That, no, it's not fair to families, because they're up in the air. It's not fair to the children, because they don't know how they get into school, and everybody's getting frustrated. It certainly isn't fair to the bus company, or to Liz, or to anybody else who's trying to make this work. So, that, that May 1 date is more than fair. And people telling them now, and getting that form available ASAP, so they can fill it out whenever they wish.
So, on that front, we actually, I actually had conversation with my staff. If you're a, we're asking all parents to fill out the transportation form, because we get more than just, "I need the bus-"
Right.
"-from that form." As a parent, if my need for the bus may be dependent on whether or not my child is in extended day, but I don't know if my child's in extended day yet, because you're sending me the bus form on February 1st, but extended day registration doesn't open until April 1st, I can't accurately fill out this form, because I don't know if my child's gonna be given a spot at extended day. So, thinking of it from a parent lens, wanting the parent to fill out the transportation form accurately, not on worst-case scenario, because I don't know, I'm, I'm just gonna say I need the bus every day both ways, right, when in fact they may not. I had the conversation with Mrs. Gillette, who oversees the extended day program, and we talked about timeline for registration for that program. And last year, you might remember that she opened registration April 11th. She delayed it from the previous years of the February registration time for everything. Because what she found was, people fill out the registration in February, and by the time August rolls around, they totally forgot that they've filled out the registration. Kiddos are getting on the bus to go to extended day, and the parent's waiting for them at home at the bus stop, because they forgot they registered them for extended day, and now they're in a panic because their child is missing. When in fact, their child is exactly where we thought they were supposed to be.
I did that.
Because the, the child was registered for extended day. So, the thinking on it is, delay the registration for extended day a handful more months, when parents maybe are closer to thinking about, "What does next fall look like?" And are maybe in a better spot to make that decision, versus, "Oh, I gotta get a spot, I'm filling it out February 1st, and-"
Makes sense.
"-I forgot I registered everybody." So, number one, it takes up too many seats in extended day that maybe we don't need to be, have occupied. So, she feels strongly that the registration for the program be pushed out into April. I asked her, "Is it possible for you to back up that registration to April 1st-ish? Will that give you the timeline that you're looking for?" Thinking that, okay, registrations for extended day and early learning center get pushed out, we, we took a look at a calendar, it's actually this year gonna be April 3rd. Parents have access to fill that out. She, we're going to use the same sort of form that we do for the bus form. So that, parents click submit, all that data gets populated into a spreadsheet for extended day. She can tell, okay, this is how many spots I have open, every day, based on what's coming in. All of those registrations will be date and timestamped, so she can say, "Oh, I hit my capacity." And then anybody who registers after that gets the notification, you know, you're on the waitlist. We would also push out a communication that says, "We've reached capacity on whatever days," and keep providing those updates. As a parent, I fill out the form April 5th. April 6th, I get a confirmation. My kids are all placed on the days I need in extended day. Now I can fill out the bus form, because now I know my kids are, because that's one of the things we ask on the, on the form. Are your children attending extended day, morning, afternoon? So, we thought about the timeline to ensure that parents could accurately fill out that form when the time comes. We also talked about, could we push our deadline from last year, last year it was April 15th, for the transportation form? Yes. We can push out the deadline to May 1st, and still have enough time to review everything, eliminate any duplicates, because if you have parents that are separated, they're both filling out the form, you get duplicates. So, we need to clean up that form before we send it off to the bus company. But clearly, by the mid or late May, we should be able to clean all that up, get it to the bus company. They have the month of June, even into early July, to set a bus route, assign kids to a bus route, get that information back to us so that we can push that out to parents. So, that, that's, that's part of the larger complexity of, of all this.
Dr. Burnham, do you want there to be an appeal process?
I understand where you're going with this, but I can tell you right now that we will get the same parent comments coming in. Additionally, now a parent gives me a rationale for it. Am I asking for verification that this is true and accurate?
Depends on the situation, I guess.
Right?
Yeah.
So...
Will it help you and your staff, particularly Liz, if there is an appeal, in the sense that it would deflect some of the ire?
I think that, and I'll, I'll ask Liz to kinda weigh in here. Call it something different if you want, this emergency bus application piece, but I think this is where the appeal piece is.
Okay.
Right? I didn't get you a form on time, but that's because this is a new extenuating circumstance. Okay, let me determine whether or not it is truly a new extenuating circumstance, and if it is, we will do our best to get you on the bus. That said, we are, we are saying that we are going to bus more students. Right? And I still need to make sure that we, we leave a couple of seats on every bus open for new move-ins to town. So, that does give me some flexibility to say, "Yes, this is truly an extenuating circumstance. I can't get you seated just yet, but as soon as I can get you on that bus, we'll notify you that your pickup starts tomorrow." Right? Because honestly, I think if there's just a broad appeal, I'm still gonna hear all of the same stories that I, I hear, right? Like, Liz, your thoughts on an appeal process?
I agree with what you're saying, Dr. Burnham. I, I definitely think that the emergency bus applications allows for that flexibility, that I think the school committee seems to be wanting with parents for an appeal process. And then we can take those situations and look at them one by one, and see what those situations are, just like we do now, actually. We have been successful getting most families on the bus, depending upon the situation, but we have so far. So, I really don't see an issue with this, if we did leave this into policy. And I think that definitely, it allows, like I said, for that flexibility. I think we run into- I'm sorry, I was just muted there, sorry. I think we run into trouble if we're saying something other than this, as far as all students, grades K through 12 being bused, because we may not be able to deliver on that. So, I think this bus policy was very thoughtful when the policy subcommittee and Mr. Scullum-Breen had come up with this language. And I think, as far as the situations that I've seen in the past several years that I've been doing transportation, I think it definitely takes care of most of that.
Okay. I'm okay with that, then. I mean, if we look at the emergency thing as an appeal, which basically is what it is.
It's that case-by-case consideration.
It's a case-by-case look at. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. There were a couple of comments that people made that, I understand why we're not doing it, but people asked, and I, I wish to make it clear. Someone asked about opting in on the form instead of, I mean, an opt-out form instead of an opt-in form. And I understand why you can't do that, because you get more information on the transportation form than just the bus. So, if you only got forms from people who didn't want the bus, you would have a problem.
That is true. Additionally, if, if it was an opt-out of riding the bus, there may be less sense of urgency on the part of parents to notify the district, and then we're trying to place many, many more students than really are necessary. And then, it's weeks of figuring out who's actually riding the bus, who's not riding the bus. Do I have extra seats on the bus? Do I have extra seats on the bus? But yes, the, the form really does give us much more information than just a bus request form, right? And, you know, we did that during the COVID year, you know, created the bus application form, the bus request form. But, you know, based on feedback from the secretaries, there was so much other information that we were in need of, that it morphed into this-
A bigger form.
Transportation form, which gives us all, are you a drop-off in the morning, a car pickup in the afternoon? Are you bus in the morning, but a car pickup in the afternoon? Are you going to extended day? What days? Is it before school, after school? Are you walking? Are you, you know, a, a fifth grade with consent to get off the, there's, there's just a lot of information that we get from that, that form. We really do want and need every parent to fill that out, because it really does help us get prepared, particularly in those, you know, the early days and weeks, where you're setting the routines of which kids go on which bus. When we have all this information ahead of time, each school is, is better prepared with information as to what routines have to be set up, right? And there are still many, 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 even given all of this, many, many, many daily dismissal changes.
Go ahead.
So, a couple things I had down. One was, I didn't know if there should be a date where the applications become available, and how they're sent out, how they're dispersed. We had talked about it, making sure maybe the, the students themselves also get notification that they need to fill out the application. And then the, the second part, the second concern I had was just the K to six aspect. In the first paragraph, we say, or maybe the second paragraph, we're saying that, you know, all students are gonna be, K through six students are gonna be transported. But then, in one dash one, if and only if a bus application submitted, I'm concerned about that, because of, again, going to like the state law, which you say at the, at the bottom, we say at the bottom, that you really have to transport those-
Anybody who asks, yep.
So-
Over the two miles.
Over two miles.
I'd like the language changed on the if and only if bus application. I'm thinking more something like, "All students in Lunenburg Primary School, Turkey Hill School," or whatever the grades, "shall be bused. A registration form is, must be submitted, or an application must be submitted." But, by the deadline. But, I think it's gonna be sadly on the district to now go and say, "Okay, who didn't submit theirs?" And now they gotta reach out to those families and get them to submit.
Would you mirror the language that was in that paragraph, or the language I suggested was, "Grade seven to 12 students will need to register for transportation by our deadline, or by May 1st, to receive transportation." Maybe the Lunenburg Public Schools will, will transport all K to six grade students that register by May 1st.
Possibly, but I worry that still conflicts with state law, that, okay, so, scenario, I don't fill out the form. My kids are legally allowed to still take the bus.
Be on the bus if they're outside two miles.
Yet, you're saying I can't? Oh, maybe there's lawsuits happening there.
What, what if we put the language instead of that if and only if you, it basically says, "Per state, state regulation, all students K through six within a distance of two miles greater than, from the school are entitled to busing. If you wish to avail yourself of this busing, you must submit an application." Because then we're, we're telling them, "You have this right, but we don't know if you wanna use it, and you gotta tell us if you wanna use it." And then I think that gets around the issue about, you know, whether or not they were provided notice, whether or not they chose to do this, because we can't like conscript them onto the bus. They're just entitled to use the bus. And so, I don't think it, in my opinion, and I'm not a lawyer for the school district, but in my opinion, if they're made aware of their right, they also have the same power to give up that right. And so, if we tell them, "This form is required, otherwise you waive this right," I think we're still within the bounds of the law, though I would ask Melissa that.
I like that.
I do like that, Tony.
And then they still have the opportunity of an emergency bus application.
Yep.
If there's a new and arising-
Yes, a new and, exactly.
Correct. Now, they need the bus.
I forgot.
I lived here for, my kids have gone to the district for six years, and I didn't fill out my, but I lived two miles or more.
And that's what people are saying, like, well, they've always given us this bus right before.
Well, see, and that's what we have to make sure people understand.
The accountability needs to be put on parents.
You're not going to the last week in August, saying, "Now, I'm going on the bus."
Yep.
You know, we, we're not doing that again.
No.
Somehow, that has to get out there.
So, this is that, my thought to that concern is, maybe it's part of the policy, then. Maybe we ask in one of these bullets that the school district will reach out to any families who have not submitted their application by, I don't know.
Do we have the time and resources for that, for Liz to sit and reach out to every single person who's choosing not to fill out a form?
I'll just remind you of some data.
That's gonna be an issue, I think.
Between the April 15th deadline last year, but prior to us pushing out that communication to everyone August 26th, that if you need the bus, you gotta let us know, we took in more than 400 forms. So, in other words, parents, they're busy, right? They're busy. "Oh, I never did fill out that transportation form. I need to fill it out. I fill it out, you know, July 31st, and send it in." Right? That, that's where we're at. It's about setting the parameters, making the expectations clear. This is what we will do, this is what you must do, and then sticking to that.
Well, yeah, that's the, right, the sticking to that part.
So, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm fine if we wanna put in the point about the district will make the transportation form available April 1st.
Uh, where such and such is located, and I think it's just being specific in the policies, so we can find it. policy, so we can find it.
Now, to ask a technical question, that I probably already know the answer of, but somebody asked, so I'm gonna ask. Is there a way to, if I'm a parent and I have to do this form seven times, is, is there a way techno- technology-wise to
Batch it.
To keep the information that is the same for each of my seven kids in the application, and change out individual kids, so that it's not like I'm not typing my address 7,000 times, and my emergency contacts, and all those things? Is there a way to do that? I don't know. That's why I'm asking, because I, I sympathize with the comment we got, that you have to keep doing it. I get that, but sometimes some things you just have to keep doing. I don't know.
At least it's not with paper and pencil, like in the old days, when I had to fill out all those back-to-school forms.
If it was pencil and paper, you could write most of that stuff in, leave out stuff to your kid, make seven copies, and write in what, separate from your kid.
Back in my day, we didn't have a copy right.
True enough, true enough.
My worry is we're gonna be upsetting even more Lunenburg parents, because now they're gonna have to fill out a form, and most of them will not fill out a form now, because they just already had busing.
Well
We always ask them to fill out the form now. Even when they would call, it was like, no, we need to fill out the form, because there's other information in there. And when we would reach out to those families that we knew may have had challenges with completing the form, we would get that information
And fill out the form.
By the phone, and fill out the form.
So that's
Liz, I don't know if there's an easy way for us to have parents replicate, or
I think there's a few different ways, Dr. Burnham, that we could handle it. Um, I think on the form, we could tweak some of the questions, so if they have multiple children within the school system, we could ask them that, and then we could ask them their grade levels, names, things like that. So we could tweak the form to do that. So when it populates on the spreadsheet, it will have that information in different columns that we can sort. Um, so we could do something like that, for example. Um, I can talk to, um, Pam Valley, who helps create the online form, once we tweak all of the questions, and see if there's a different way that she is thinking that we could do it as well.
I think people would appreciate that.
Yeah.
If, if it's possible.
Yep.
I mean
I don't know that it needs to be spelled out to that level of detail in the policy, but definitely, yeah.
Practically, if we could do that, I think that would be helpful.
I know I would have appreciated that back in the day.
Yes. Um, there was one more parent comment that I know we have decided not to do, but I would like to address, just so that parent knows that I read that comment, and I understand. Um, the thought was putting a mile marker on it, at a mile and a half, and having everybody within that mile and a half have to find their own transportation, and only bus those a mile and a half out, which was the previous policy. We figured out the problem with that when we walked around looking at the sidewalks, and the police officer with us was quite nervous with us standing on Northfield Road in plain sight of the middle school.
Yeah.
And he kept looking at the traffic. He was very nervous with the safety there. So, some places just are not safe, even though they're close. So, we do understand that, and that's part of what all of this is about. And I think that's all I have to say from what other people told me. Also, we wouldn't have to include on this, um, some, see, that's isn't what all I had to say, sorry. Um, we wouldn't have to include, somebody suggested that no cost is being assessed to any family due to the transportation, there's no transportation cost. By leaving that out of this policy, and if we wanted to have a transportation cost, we would have to revisit the policy. So.
Didn't we determine, I thought you got, you and Mr. Cassidy presented, it was like an astronomical
Yeah, it was ridiculous, so it wouldn't have worked. So if we were gonna do that, that would have to be in the policy.
Yes.
So by not putting it in the policy, it would not happen. Anybody else have anything?
No.
So did we, um, change this policy enough that we have to first read it again next time?
I think so.
Yeah.
All right.
I, I did send waiver language, so
Go ahead.
I sent it to Dr. Burnham. I'll just read it, so that everybody Pursuant to state and, uh, state law and regulation, all students K through six living more than two miles from school are entitled to busing. Failed to submit a bus application before May 1st shall be deemed a waiver of access to busing. So that, that just puts the onus on them.
That's pretty strong.
Yeah.
I think, I, I like that, that won't, hopefully, I mean, it's not, we're not trying to give anybody a hard time.
No.
The whole thing is, it's not good for anybody what went on last August.
No.
For anybody. Everybody's blood pressure is up, and the angst level is ridiculous before school even starts, so we can't have that.
Bus companies need to be able to map out the route before the first day of school.
Absolutely, it's about efficiency and being able to communicate back to parents in a timely manner, ahead of the opening of school, and not like two days before. Your child's on bus route four.
People need to know these things ahead of time. And everybody has to go into September 1 calm, so
And I think somebody had suggested the idea of doing a, a transportation survey of families in the fall.
I saw that.
Again.
We've already done that.
That's still a long way away from next year.
It's too far away.
People, if they were asked to do that, they would likely indicate that they did need the bus, when in fact, they may not actually need the bus.
Just to be safe.
Just to be safe.
We've done this surveys, it's not accurate, unfortunately, so it's not.
We really would really appreciate the more accurate information. The more accurate and timely way that we can get this information to the bus company, the better off they are to be able to get those routes set up and get back to us, so that we're not communicating out days before school opens about bus routes and assignments. I mean, that, that is the goal.
Right, absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, so are we done with the bus policy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's move on, then. We will move on to, um, we're not going to read these policies, but we are going to talk about them. The, um, okay, my, sorry, here we go, that's better. Um, the first read of the food insufficient funds. Um, this is talking about in general, about when students' lunch balance reaches negative numbers. That, when the student's lunch balance reaches a negative $12, the parents will be contacted by school personnel to inform them. They must provide their child with a lunch and/or resolve their unpaid school lunch balance. And then lunch accounts with negative balances for 90 days will be turned over to an outside collection after the parents have been served, um, a letter, uh, via the postal service after 30 days. So they are given sufficient time to clear that up before anything like that would happen. I, I just have a couple of questions about these two, two policies in general. I, I guess I'm questioning why they're different policies? Because it overlaps, and, and it confuses me.
So maybe, um, Mrs. Lorenzen can jump in here and offer some thoughts on that?
I can, actually. The, the need for two different policies is, um, actually coming down from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. In our last review in 2019, it was stated that we needed to have a charging policy, and that our insufficient funds policy was literally just a collections policy. So, in trying to separate the collections to end the charging policy, I noticed that they overlapped as well, so I took out a lot of the language that was in the insufficient funds, and created the, the charging policy. Does that help?
Yeah, that, that helps. Um, why is breakfast clock crossed off?
I'm not sure, it should actually say meals. I think we might want to fix that, because we, we offer breakfast and lunch.
Yeah, okay.
And that was probably an oversight on my part, just to be clear, um,
Not to worry about
Ms. Pearson did share these with me, and I missed that, that those, um, two breakfast lines were crossed out.
I think potentially that's a substitution that we can make without having to bring it back to the first read.
That's not a, that's not a substantially different thing, that's just, is there anything else anybody wants to say about that particular policy? Go ahead.
We talked about this on policy subcommittee, and I know that this is a little bit different than when we've been, I do, I do think that, two things. Number one, that we should ultimately try to figure out a way, and we tried to work this out, a means test for when it goes to collections, so that if somebody like truly doesn't have the means, like, it's just gonna waste everybody's time. We're gonna spend more money on sending it to collections than we would collect from those people.
Right.
Um, so, you know, you're not gonna get blood from a stone, why are we bothering? And then the second thing, and I know that this is not something that's directly tied to this, but I do think that in the event that government funding for school lunches for everybody goes away, that we should ultimately talk about providing school lunches for everyone at no cost. I know that that's a, a lot of money, but I think that, you know, as part of the commitment to giving students the capacity to learn, which is why we do athletics, why we do social emotional learning, empty bellies equal empty heads. And, you know, it was a good thing for COVID, and I hope that that change can somehow be made permanent, but
You're looking at that at the state level.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there were
Parents did send something, yeah.
Excellent.
House Bill 766 would, would keep free lunch for all kids, and that parent suggested that we advocate, we'll talk about this later at another time, because it's getting late. But, but, um, we can do some advocacy on our part.
Oh, excellent.
To, to get that, and when we talk to our legislators on March 7th, this would be something we would talk about.
So, I was gonna say, under those bills, Representative Kouschmerich and, uh, Representative Scarsdale do support those, and it said on the website that they supported those bills.
So, um, but, okay. All right, well, let's look at the other one, because they really, I understand that if the, if Desi said it needed to be two separate policies, then it needs to be two separate policies, though I do feel it's sort of the same. And this clearly shows that if a child has insufficient funds, they don't get to buy ice cream, but they can, they get their lunch, they, that everybody gets lunch. And that's what bothered me about the first policy, that it didn't say that.
Right.
But if it had to be split, um, Mrs. Lorenzen, you did what you could do. So, um, I don't really understand why it had to be split, but as long as it's there, then, um Yeah, so this is, this second policy is when there's no problem with paying for the food. It's just how, how you go about charging for the food. I was okay with this one. Everybody else?
Yep, yes.
Okay. All right, so, so those will come back as second reads next time?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And the concessions as well?
Oh, yep, we gotta go to that one, concessions. I didn't have a problem with anything in that. Does anybody have anything?
No, that was really well done.
Very well done.
The only thing was, if we're buying a hot dog roller?
Yes.
Should that be in there? Because you mentioned pizza.
Oh, it was in there, at one point.
Did I miss that? No cooking.
Didn't we talk about that on Friday, Kate?
It says no cooking, except pizza. Somewhere it says, store-bought pizza you get from the pizza store, but
I could have sworn we talked about the hot dog roller when we met on Friday.
We did, when we put it into the, um, operating
Okay, that's what it was, okay.
Well, maybe I'm not even seeing the pizza here, so maybe I'm not
Local pizza shop.
Oh, you did see that.
Because we wouldn't be ordering the hot dogs from the local hot dog shop.
No, but it says no ho- no cooking, no homemade food. So, somewhere it should say hot dogs, if the hot dog, if you're gonna get a hot dog roller, I'm just saying, if you're getting that clear, I could see where somebody could, well, how can we make hot dogs? Or we can make hot dogs, so can we make sausages? Or ma- you know?
Right.
So, I could see it growing.
Prepackaged foods, pizza, and hot dogs.
I also want to have it open-ended and not very specific, too, where it's
Well, this is true, too, but
Well, I will say that it is very clear that we cannot fry food, so there's no french fries, chicken fingers, et cetera, because that's a whole different set of standards for that, so
So, I don't know, I, it was, and if you people don't think that's an issue, that's fine with me, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold up the policy based on the hot dogs, but
Well, I think as long as we get it till April 1st, I think we're okay.
If you're buying a hot dog roller
Good time.
Yeah.
You need to be able to
Just make, so pull this one back and bring it back again.
Well, just pull prepackaged foods, comma, pizza and hot dogs.
But then again, are we doing sausages? Are we gonna, I, I don't know if you want to be too specific.
Brian's like, I want the Italian sausages, stop limiting it to hot dogs.
Use the hot dog roller?
Well, in
Almost like, yeah, devices, right? Like a hu- uh, the hot lamp, or the
Pizza warmer, whatever you're warming the pizza up with, and then, I know we used to have that.
So, it is pretty specific in the standard operating procedure. It references the hot dogs, et cetera, et cetera, so I'll, I'll work with Nadine, and we'll take a look at that sentence to, to your point.
Keep it general.
I think policy general, and then your handbook be specific.
Very specific.
I love that. Like, let's make policy easy. Nadine can go crazy on specifics, I love that.
I'm okay with that.
Sounds good.
I'm not gonna die on the hot dog hill, so. We'll bring it back next time.
I think Brian just wants to die.
Brian's like, I am not limiting it.
It's enough to us to make the policy, and then they execute it, like, okay, this is how we're gonna do it.
Yeah, I'm all right with that. Okay, I just found the pizza, I know it was in there somewhere. Okay.
All right, so can I make a motion to waive the first readings of policy 3701-01, 3701-02, and 3701-03?
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mrs. Lorenzen.
Thank you.
You've been very
You're welcome.
We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, phew. Now, on to reports, does anybody have any reports?
Teddy Hill will be meeting next Thursday.
Oh. I have a report from the primary school, from the 30th, Monday, I think. Uh, they completed their mid-year I-Ready assessment, scores look pretty good, and they're looking at ways to, uh, improve moving forward. Two offsites visits to other schools, um, happened using, to go view while they were using the HMH, and they went to the Rheingold, who've been running the program for a year now, and our teachers came back with some great ideas as to how to go forward. Uh, kindergarten was going out to Templeton, I believe, yesterday, to see how they were doing with HMH. I don't know how they viewed it, but I'm sure they had a great time. Uh, there's two presentations at the school this week, which is great. Uh, one was regarding bullying, uh, Stephanie Miller was putting on a presentation to the kids what bullying is and when to report it, and then the Tiger presentation from Humboldt State University was happening, I believe, Friday. Uh, it's teamwork, or let's team up, and it's how to help students with, um, challenging social interactions. Uh, report cards came out today, as well as the I-Ready scores, they were sent home to parents. Math night is coming up on February 13th. Amy and Jean are putting together the activities for the night, it's open to families, not just the primary school kiddos, so that's gonna be really fun. 100th day of school is coming up, which is great, uh, after-school activities, um, Mr. Adams was saying, I believe they have six after-school activities for the primary activities for the primary school. I didn't get all of them. I know there's an arts and crafts. A parent is going to, to do a forest day, which is great. Lego club, there's a kids CrossFit. Uh, Mrs. Bastian's doing something, let's stem, there's recycle art. They're going to have a grand old time. Uh, there's a pre-K and K meeting with Patty Gillette, Mr. Adams and Chrissy coming up in March, I believe it's March 16th. And we didn't have many teachers, um, because they're probably out doing their visits, so I didn't really get too much grade reports, but everything's going wonderful down there.
Okay.
PTO, uh, they all made fun of me for calling it the legal guardian thing on the school committee meeting. And, uh, they sold out. They sold out all of the tickets. Uh, they, their next event is in April. It's on the weekend of the debut of the Super Mario movie and they're going to have tickets for a show that will be exclusively for Lunenburg students.
Oh, fun.
That is super fun.
Before it will open on Saturday morning. So unless you're like a super nerd and stay up until midnight on Friday, it'll be the first time you get to see the Mario movie.
That sounds wonderful. Finance committee met on January 26th. The town manager presented the capital plan. She is proposing that the first six items be funded, which includes the T H E S exterior doors upgrades and replacements, which includes the vestibule, um, construction, the T H E S security upgrades and the primary school security upgrades. These upgrades include upgraded door access and alarms as well as additional security cameras. The seventh and not funded item is the T H E S upgraded fire alarm system. And the capital plan has significantly been impacted due to the need to hold back money because of the, um, possible tax abatements. It is possible that the fire alarm system could be funded, but, um, we won't know that until much later. The finance committee has requested that we come up with a contingency plan should the fire alarm system fail. We will add that to a future agenda. I don't know what our contingency plan possibly could be, but anyways, their next meeting is February 9th. They asked at the meeting, do you have a contingency plan? And Peter and I both looked at them and said, no.
Big or small.
Which is what it is with every single system in that building.
Absolutely. And it depends on what part fails, whether or not we can just replace the part and have everything functional.
Which is why your comment about the heating system, that's the one that scares me the most. And I'm like, oh, no, here we go. So, um, their next meeting is the 9th of February. So, um, we have no other con, um, okay. So now we have our last public comment section. If, if anyone would like to make a public comment at this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no public comments from the public, I just have two really quick things.
Yes.
Um, one, I just want to say a shout out to the PTO because they did an amazing job putting together the stands and they took such abuse and they don't deserve it. I feel terrible for the kids who can't make the dance, but in no way is it on the PTO. It's, oh, there's, you're not on Facebook, you smart man.
Sold out.
Yeah. And, and people are furious that they told their kids that they were going and they hadn't bought tickets and now the kids are upset. And I'm so sad for the kids, but by no means is that on the PTO because they very clearly stated in their advertising space was limited. We're working with a small space. I, they can't do anything. So I, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the work. As a parent, as a school committee member, I think you guys are doing a wonderful job and I just wanted to make sure that got out there. The other thing, I have read endless amounts of comments today and I, I need to get off social media. I don't know, it just bothers me anyways. I'm reading about bullying in the schools. We do not tolerate bullying in the schools. As much as you say school committee doesn't care, we don't know about the bullying in the schools. We have not heard a single thing come through our way. So if you think we are ignoring bullying in the schools, that is just not the case as I'm sure Mr. Santry's not, Mr. Adams is not. I, I can go on to the rest of the principles. It frustrates me to no end that there are parents in the community who think that we tolerate bullying in any form or any manner. As a parent, I find that deplorable. Come to your, just your, your principal first. If that's not working, come to the school committee. I want to hear about it because it's not accepted and I do not want the comments out there saying that we are accepting it and letting it go by. And that's all I have to say.
It's also Facebook.
I just need to get off Facebook. It riles me up. It's so bad.
So I guess that brings you to topics of future discussion.
I would love if parents wanted to talk about bullying. Bring it to me. What can we do to help?
That, that would be a public comment.
Absolutely.
If people came during public comment and then we could put it on the agenda.
Yes. What can we do to work together?
If people want to come and talk about that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for our next meeting is getting pretty stacked.
I think the bullying piece potentially could be explored as a workshop meeting.
Yeah.
I think, you know, it's been some time since the anti-bullying law and.
Right.
The need for every district to have policy and procedure and so forth around it. Um, it might be beneficial to have a little bit of a legal update on what it is, what, right? Because some of the challenge is, the term bullying has a legal definition. The investigations that we are compelled to do when that claim is made are done, but there are certain parameters that must be met for it to be deemed bullying. That said, children can be unkind to each other. And again, that's not okay. Just because it may not rise to the legal definition of bullying does not mean that any of us disregard what's going on. We are working with children to navigate those situations. So it's an ongoing process.
Absolutely.
But no, none of the administrators take those claims lightly. Every single bus incident is followed through. Every single claim from a parent is investigated. We'll have more to say on, you know, on that at a future meeting for sure.
All right, that makes sense to me. Um, so at our next meeting, we have the legislative agenda to set and, um, all those other things that we said we were going to do. And revisit the bus policy. And you were going to talk about the equity audit and we had a very busy meeting coming up as well. Um, so we are going to adjourn into executive session. I promise will be five minutes. It's not going to take long.
Okay.
Um, seeing as it's, you know, it won't take long because this one comes from me. So I know.